Okay, and I'm going to open it to public comment right away. We have several people who want to come and make a public comment today. And if you just state your name and your address.
I'm Mary Perkins, 62 Ruth Street, Lunenburg, Mass.
Carol DeBatten Court, 1193 West Road, Ashby, Mass.
Marilyn Quinn, 297 Pleasant Street, Lunenburg.
Thank you for giving me a moment to speak tonight, and thank you for, Loxie, for inviting us to come to speak tonight. Here with me are Marilyn and Carolyn, and we all want to thank you for your accomplishments as a school committee. As a community members, we are so proud of our new schools and our infrastructure. We want to thank you especially for your support in school choice, in the school choice program. You should be proud of the understanding that you all understand that one shoe doesn't fit all, especially in high school, and the support for Monty Tech and the charter schools and other schools. The reason we are here tonight is to talk about the wall of remembrance at the A.J. Robinson Memorial House. We all lost our sons. Steven Hamilton, forever 22. Zachary Quinn, forever 23. Paul Perkins, forever 23. They were all friends, who all played soccer on that very field that Fieldhouse is built on. Our children were athletes. They were soccer athletes. We played on lawns where the library sits today. We played in Devens and wherever space allowed. But through the leadership of Sandy LaSert, we built the soccer field and track field that sits there today. It was our generation of parents, it was our generation of children that did that fundraising to build that field. The football field was adjacent, and it's where the new school sits today. After our first practice, though, we wondered what we did with that beautiful field we put in, because we used to empty our kids' soccer shoes that were filled with old tires that had ground up, because that's how the soccer field was built. It is now the football field today. Our children all lost their lives in car accidents at very young ages. They were the Lunenburg youth. They grew up in Lunenburg, they attended Lunenburg schools through eighth grade, and had many friends in Lunenburg, and they were all living in Lunenburg at the time of their death. And now we're here together, the three of us as mothers, to ask for your consideration of honoring our children on the wall of remembrance on the A.J. Memorial Fieldhouse. Our children did not graduate from Lunenburg High School, but through the generosity of the school committee and the generosity of Lunenburg, supporting school choice, they were able to thrive in another high school. Remember how old our schools were back then? We would like to say a few words about our children. Paul Perkins, these are all Paul's soccer pictures. As you can see, there's many, many, many times spending on the fields in Lunenburg. Paul was a graduate of Monty Tech of 2010. He was 23 at the time of his death, and his funeral was held on his 24th birthday. While Paul was a soccer player and an athlete, he was also an Eagle Scout in Lunenburg. He was involved in many community service projects within the town. His Eagle project was installing three benches and clearing a trail on Clarks Hill Conservation Land in Lancaster. That was actually the last place I saw Paul, right before his death, was at that place. He also died on Lancaster Ave. Paul was also a carpenter through his training at Monty Tech. He was killed on October 18th, 2015, in a single car accident on Lancaster Ave. Across by Goodrich Street marks the spot, to remind us. He was driving way too fast, he was not wearing a seatbelt, and he died instantly when his car flipped over onto its roof and spun around and hit the guardrail on the opposite side of the road. A seatbelt would have saved his life. In conclusion, my part of the discussion tonight is that Marilyn, Carolyn, and I, as mothers, we bonded together on those soccer fields through many games and many years. And while we lost touch later in life, our tragedies unfortunately bonded us together again. The three of us had not spoken or seen each other in a long time prior to our son's death, but there we were for the very first time in a long time, meeting again, standing at the new A.J. Robbins Memorial Fieldhouse overlooking our field, the field we built. We held hands, we hugged, we cried, and it felt so, so very, very special. We believe our sons deserve to be honored on the wall of remembrance, as both A.J. and Kevin are honored in that same garden and field. Thank you for the time to listen to us tonight.
Good evening. Thank you to the school committee and members for having us tonight. My name is Carol DeBatten Court, and my son Steven Hamilton. My son Steven Hamilton. Steven was 22 years old when he was killed on November 17th, 2010. Steven was a graduate of Monty Tech of 2007, and he was an avid soccer player and captain of a soccer team during his senior year at Monty Tech. He was a varsity player since the day one of his freshman year of soccer. Steven also ran track for Monty Tech. He was involved in Lunenburg sports since first grade. He was coached by his dad, who gave eight years to the Lunenburg soccer in both coaching and fundraising. Steven played soccer and was represented by his town proudly when he was on the travel team. During his eight years of playing soccer for the town of Lunenburg, he was always there to help with raising money for Lunenburg to obtain the best fields for the sports. Steven was attending UMass Lowell studying mechanical engineering and was working in that field as an intern, in that field as an intern for SMC and Sterling when he was killed. Steven was on his way home from work that evening when a bull from a nearby farm had wandered onto Route 190. Steven was killed instantly when his car collided with that bull. As a lifetime resident myself of Lunenburg, I ask that you consider adding the three names as outlined here tonight to honor these three young men who gave so much to the love of sports and the town they were proud to call home.
I wanted to be here on behalf of my son Zachary Quinn, as well as for other young Lunenburg citizens that may otherwise be forgotten. As parents, we learn very early, as many of you probably have experienced, that when our children enter this world, we need to advocate for them. And we advocate for them until they learn to represent themselves by explaining for themselves their hopes and their dreams. The tragic circumstances of our sons' deaths are unique, and the plan for the wall of remembrance has brought us together after many years to be our sons' voices once again. If I may express the harshest reality of losing a child, it lies in remembering. You want to recall every detail of their lives, especially the essence of their being. You want others to not forget them. We, as parents, all of us in this room, I'm sure, never want our child to be forgotten or left out. And so we continue to speak about our children, their achievements, their activities, along with everything that gives and gave their lives meaning and purpose. We love talking about our children still. We all do. There is a saying I repeated to my sons regularly as they were growing up, excuse me. Life choices are life-changing. And I would say, think about the consequences, and do your very best, which choice will bring you victory. We lived with that saying. Zach was a young citizen of the community who continued to serve Lunenburg schools long after leaving middle school. He remained connected to Lunenburg in so many ways until his death. He was a member of today's young adult community who joined together at the Friday night football games on their home field after a day of work or school, and they reunited again every year at the Thanksgiving Day sidelines to show support for their home team, the Blue Knights. There have been many young adults from Lunenburg who were not graduates of Lunenburg High School, yet they all remained friends and grew up in Lunenburg. They were our community's youngest citizens. These former students now make up a good segment of the town population, who have graduated from college and moved home, came back, and some of them have stayed and are raising children of their own. My son was successful and accomplished at the young age of 23, and Zach was very good at navigating for himself from an early age, setting goals and bringing his ideas to fruition. He attended Lunenburg schools for nine years, pre-K through seventh grade. Then he heard from a Lunenburg friend about a school choice and the different learning opportunities being offered at the Parker Charter School at Devens. However, the waiting list back then, and some of you may recall, was hundreds long. So Zach soon learned there was a new charter school developing in the planning stages, and he came home announcing he wanted to be a founding member of that student body, and he wanted to attend their startup meetings. This was the North Central Charter Essential School, NCCES, as you know, was successful and is now the size of school in Pittsburgh. Zach was a go-getter from a very young age and pretty amazing at navigating. He set the bar high for himself, and he would make a plan and always seem to manage his way to conquer and succeed. He was a member of the Lunenburg sports teams for soccer, basketball, and baseball. He later became a FIFA referee for the Lunenburg Youth Soccer Association, and he enjoyed working and developing the younger athletes in town, although he was not a member of the schools here. He loved the town, and those that he was refereeing, those younger children, all knew him and liked very much having him on the field. He was a scout with honors. He took pride in being a good role model. And I recall his comment when he became a snowboard instructor at Watchusup Mountain during his high school years, saying how much he liked being at the mountain to welcome the Lunenburg school students off their bus and teaching them to achieve their dreams of snowboarding. Zach's choices were life-changing in many positive ways. He graduated cum laude in 2012 from post-university with a Bachelor of Science degree in biology. He was a medical technologist with a company who offered him full scholarship for his master's degree, because they recognized his gifts, to which he remarked, "It looks like I'll be going on to get my doctorate after all," Mom. He learned to snooze the week before his accident. I'd like to close with this one thought: Life choices are life-changing. Either way you decide on the criteria for the wall of remembrance, it will be life-changing for our three families and other families in town as well. We all ask that you please do your best with the choice, which will be victorious in your objectives, for honoring the young citizens of this community, whose names the wall of remembrance will reflect. When I heard about the concept of the wall of remembrance, I had a vision at that time of all who would visit there. Our hope, my husband's, mine, and ours, is that Zach's and his friends, former team members, and his many families, excuse me, his many friends from town, will see his name there someday, as they stand before those fields with their own sons and daughters, and pause to recall the times and their experiences and everything they shared. And if they'll just pause and look at their child and say, "See, this name, I remember him. We all grew up together on these fields in Lunenburg." May they not forget. Thank you for your time and listening.
We're going to move to the chair's report. Oh, wait, oh, wait. Yes, please come up with more public comment, so I can recover.
My name's Ruth Ann White. I live at 13 Jaclyn Drive in Lunenburg. My partner Michelle Belisa was going to be here tonight, but she became ill today, so it's just me doing the solo thing. I'm here to represent a task force in Lunenburg called ROR, which stands for Resources for Opioid Awareness and Recovery. Our group is a collaboration of the churches in town, the superintendent of schools, the chief of police, the Boys and Girls Club, as well as some at-large people from Lunenburg. Before I tell you any more about our specifics, I'd like to share a true story with you.
My name's Jo. I grew up in Lunenburg, played basketball, football, it was pretty good. I got pretty good grades, too, and I didn't even have to try. My family was a nice family. We went skiing in the winter and went to the Cape in the summer. When I had my wisdom teeth out, the doc gave me opioids for the pain, lots of them. And when my mom said, "Honey, do you need more? Does it hurt?" I said, "Sure." I finally felt normal, and I never stopped using. I'm cool, though. I can handle this. I know what I'm doing, except that my family doesn't really want to have anything to do with me now, because I've borrowed so much money from them. I've gotten pretty good at making up stories to get money out of people. I don't really have any friends, because my so-called friends all use. I'm not sure what's going to happen to me. If you have not been touched by addiction, you are unusual. If you're not related to someone or care about someone who's dealing with addiction, you are unusual. This group of people got together and said, "What can we do about this? What can we do about this in our town?" Because addiction is real, and it's happening in this beautiful Lunenburg that we love. So we decided to try to do something that was action-oriented, and our goals are threefold. One is just to increase awareness about the opioid crisis, to bring it out of the closet, if you will, to try to decrease the shame that some people feel around this. Secondly, we want to provide fact-based information about this situation. And thirdly, to provide information and support for people in active addiction or who are in recovery, and their families, and people in the community. We are hosting a forum, and you see that in front of you, on Tuesday, October 24th, at the high school at 7 o'clock. We are very excited to have Jim Wahlberg coming with the film that he produced called If Only. We also have a panel of people that I think you will find very interesting. We have a parent who lost their child to addiction. We have several young adults from Lunenburg who are in long-term recovery. We have a doctor who has switched his practice to addiction recovery. We also have Mike Dugan, the founder of Wicked Sober, and we have some Lunenburg fire and police officers that will be with us. Our goal is not to scare people, but we want to provide an opportunity to open up this conversation. And we hope that you'll support us, and we hope that you will be with us on Tuesday, the 24th. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Is there an age range that you recommend, or is this just for parents? In terms of students attending, is there a recommendation?
We're targeting high school and above, junior high, high school and above. I think the film might not be appropriate for grade school kids. Parents are more than welcome to watch it online. It's on YouTube. The movie is called If Only, and they could be a judge of that. Each parent knows their child best. But we're really targeting older kids and their parents. We hope they'll come together with their parents. That would be nice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Did you have leftovers?
Leftovers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Do we have, oh, Mary.
Busy tonight.
Actually, I don't know if I can say mine later. Mary Foyle, 985 Flat Hill Road, but I work in the school system, too, and my little public comments, little picky own after those two. But I know that policy and potential policies is a discussion later on, and I just have a few policies of concern, but I don't know if that's something we handle after, and I just am on the radar, saying I'd like to talk about a few policies.
You can do it now, or you can do it when we're having the discussion?
All right, so if it's okay with you guys, we'll just wait till we have the discussion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Anyone else? No more public comment right now? Okay, so for the chair's report, our last meeting, this school committee was held, we held a calendar workshop with members of the LEA. It was open to the public, and it was an open meeting, and we used the same IBB format that we used in contract negotiations, it's interest-based bargaining. And the process went extremely well, and it was very positive, I believe. Correct? Yes, okay. And we believe the outcome to create a consistent calendar was achieved successfully. And I've heard from several staff members about this second use of the IBB, and they are all very pleased with it. So I just wanted to report that. Did everybody feel the same way about our workshop?
Absolutely.
Yeah? So I don't know, it was not televised, and it won't be televised, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, and that's it. It was a really good experience, and we actually have that as a policy moving forward, later on. Correct?
It's a proposed policy.
Proposed policy.
It's taking that workshop discussion and putting it in a policy form into the policy number, I'm sorry.
We have it here.
5000 series. 5104, I think. So we incorporated that work that had been done in developing guidelines into that policy format that would put it in place once the school committee decides that the language is where it needs to be, and then there'll be three additional readings of that policy before the school committee would take any final action to adopt it. So there would be time for other public comment and input.
Okay. Do we have warrants on the table?
We do.
We do? Oh, they're down there. Okay. We have warrants to approve, and we have regular session minutes from September 20th. Did you all review them?
Thank you.
Do you have any changes?
No changes.
Nothing? So I'll take a motion to approve the sessions from September 20th. Motion minutes?
I move to accept the regular session meeting minutes from September 20th.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, superintendent com?
Yes, our principals are here to give an update from the beginning of school and tell about all the exciting things that have been going on, and I think we'll start with Mr. Spatafino and go that direction. How are you, Mr. Spatafino? Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So for Eliza Raboin, is typically the student rep, and I know, I met with her today and got her thoughts. So she wanted me to pass on about homecoming. The floats, the theme this year is children's books, and she wanted me to report out that the floats are for the ninth grade, they're doing the Very Hungry Caterpillar. The 10th grade is Where the Wild Things Are. 11th grade is Curious George, and 12th grade is Winnie the Pooh. And the homecoming, well, homecoming rally will be on Friday, Friday the 13th. It was an interesting day. Homecoming parade will be on Saturday, the 14th, at noon, and that'll lead into the game will be at 2 o'clock against Air Shirley. We change, well, we're not changing up the parade route, okay? Because I know that's gotten legs in the past, but we're going to be cutting it a little bit short and then going up the TCP, the entrance to the new middle high school. We're going to be going there and then having the floats around where the bus loop is now, so that they can stay there and the public can view them before the game, and then the folks, the fine folks who drive those trailers can get out easier than where they were in the past years. So that should be nice for them. They should be able to get out by halftime-ish. We're going to have a homecoming dance, will be Saturday evening, I believe it's 7 to 10, in the high school cafeteria. So that's for homecoming. She wanted me to report out that the cancer game for field hockey was held, just, was it Monday night?
Monday night.
It was Monday night, and they raised over, or around $5,000. That the proceeds went to the Cottone family. It was a really nice night, and they did a really nice job, and I know the soccer, soccer cancer games are coming up. Is it next week? Yeah, next week. So we're looking forward to those, so hopefully people will come out and support those good causes. And PSATs are next week for 10th and 11th grade. That will be October 11th, Wednesday, the 11th, and we have that kind of going-in concert with concussion testing, the baseline concussion testing. Will be done on Tuesday, which is the PD day, and we're targeting upperclassmen who have vehicles that can get to school, or hopefully parents of the younger students can drive them, get the free concussion baseline testing, which is huge. So fortunate that the PTO was able to get that grant, or to use the grant through the PTO, that we're able to get this from the Cantu Center in, at Emerson Hospital. They're one of the foremost experts or foremost institutions that are ahead of this concussion, you know, everything that goes along with concussions, the testing, the follow-through, the aftercare. It's huge. We know it's something our kids have been dealing with for a long time, and it's only seemingly becoming worse. So hopefully, kids will take advantage of that, families will take advantage of that. We've had a really excellent start to the school year. The tone of the building has been great. Kids have been awesome. Kids are great. They're engaged in the classrooms, they are participating in sports, in music band. It is, it's a vibrant place. The kids have been, you know, really, really great at games. Seeing the way they support each other, seeing the way they represent the town as fans and as players is really, really encouraging, and they deserve a lot of credit for that. So really great job by our kids. Let me see, ROR. I know that Ruth Ann just talked about ROR, and I hope people take advantage of the opportunity that's here to talk about this and become aware of the opioid crisis that's going on nationwide, and it's going on in Lunenburg. We know it's here. This just, you know, within the last two weeks, I lost one of my students in Littleton. 11 years ago, I taught him of an overdose. So it's personal to me, and it's, she just talked about the wisdom teeth. That's exactly how this happened with this young man, too. That's the road that he went down was wisdom teeth, and then getting hooked, and then, you know, going... So it's personal to me, and it's, she just talked about the wisdom teeth. That's exactly how this happened with this young man, too. That's the road that he went down, was wisdom teeth, and then getting hooked, and then, you know, going down a road that nobody wants to go down. Very unfortunate, but hopefully, people will take time to come out on the 24th to become aware of what's going on out there, because it's real, and it's here, and we need to deal with it. So I'm grateful that they've taken the lead to bring this to town, so. What else do we have? Officers are eight. We're thrilled to have him in the schools. He is so great with kids. He is such a great resource for the administration, for our teachers. Just his presence in the building makes a difference. Being able to bounce ideas off of him, get advice, have him talk to people that he knows, it's just, it works really well, and we're fortunate. I'm glad that, you know, you have worked with Chief Marino. I'm so fortunate that, we're so fortunate that Chief Marino has put him in our schools and thankful. So hopefully, that will continue. What else do we have? Graduation caps. I know this was a source that came up a few weeks ago at a meeting here. I've had conversations with the seniors or with students, my student advisory council members. We will be talking about it. We said we'll hold off till after homecoming to really have some conversations. Everybody's really busy right now. So after homecoming, we'll have those conversations. They had some really good thoughts and ideas of how we might tackle something like this, because it's, the hardest piece for, that I see is just policing how it all works, and then having a system that will make things, and it's not just me, that's the person deciding how, what is appropriate and not appropriate, that we put some things in place. So that will be, that will be going forward. Another thing that I'm sure you guys have talked about was that the card reader access, or if you haven't talked about it, you've probably heard about it. Seniors have come to me. They started that last year, and then they've, you know, brought it up again this year about having the card reader access to the building for senior privileges. So I would, you know, like to propose that as them having the opportunity to give this a shot and see how it works. For a majority of these kids that go off to college, this is their mode of getting into dorm rooms. It's going to be these card readers. I think it's that piece of responsibility that would be really positive for them, but putting boundaries around it. Not having open access to the school, obviously, 24/7, even within the school day. I'd be proposing having it until, I think it's 9:25 would be the last possible time that first period ends, or no, first, yeah, first period ends, and they would have to be in advisory for that next period. So for first period, they'd be able to get in the side door entrance, and then they would not have access to that afterwards. So if they left for lunch for senior privilege, they would have to walk around and come in and check in the office. They've signed out anyway, so they have to sign back in, but I think just having that extra layer of just only the beginning of the day, only kids with senior privilege would have that option. If it's just a student that's late, they have to go around and check in the main office, just like they would anyway. Students would have to, when they came in the side entrance, have to check in at the main office to begin with, but that's what we'd be proposing as an idea and hopefully a solution to that. Superintendent asked me to talk about, to bring costs into this. We looked at cost, you know, for somebody to get all this together. Now, this is for next year, looking at the cost for next year. I think we can do it this year, but for the cost for next year, putting it in the budget. I think we'd probably be looking at somebody, one of the secretaries being there for half a day before school started, just to process all that paperwork, to get the cards all registered, to get them with their student IDs, because we could do it with their student IDs and picture on the cards themselves, so that we would know whose, you know, whose it was if somebody lost it. That 400 cards, they're about $4 apiece, which is 400. So that half-day pay, looking at probably about a $70 cost, $400 for the cards, that initial purchase. So about, around about $500, a little less than $500 would be investment in making this happen. And then for students who lost a card, we could deactivate those cards individually, and we would associate them with a parking spot and all that, those types of things, because they would obviously have access to the parking lot if they were coming in late. And then those costs would be, the proposal is a $10 replacement cost, but, you know, obviously, that could be open for what your thoughts are. But that's what I'd be proposing to you all to think about, and it's my recommendation that we give this a shot and see how it goes. And I believe that is all I have. Any questions?
Mr. Spatafino, the 500 cards would obviously last for several years, or 400 cards, if you've got.
It's 100 cards at $4 apiece.
Okay.
So it's about $400 for the cost of just 100.
Just the one.
Now, we have, I would say, with students on senior privilege, if you called it 60 or 70, somewhere in that range, over the course of a year. So we would have some extras that would be able to be replacement cards or to roll over for the following year.
Okay.
So.
How does the price of those cards, if you buy in larger bulk, there's no expiration date on those cards?
No, I probably, no, there isn't. And probably, the more you buy, the lower the cost is. This was a cost that I got from Ms. Berry.
For 100?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
I just wanted to mention something in regard to the baseline testing.
Yes.
I wanted to say thanks to Kim Iannacci, because she's the one that brought it to me, and then I put her in contact with the PTO.
Awesome.
Yeah. So that.
Yeah, we looked into doing this last year. Carolyn Finch had approached them and proposed that, but that grant wasn't for schools that fit our profile. So the PTO, because it's, you know, a nonprofit, was able to, they were a different type of organization that was able to secure the grant. So it worked for them, and that's how we got in, which is great. So thank you.
Yeah.
So with the signups, there's the online signup that students can access. If there were openings?
There are openings.
I know there are. So my question is, would the middle school students potentially have opportunity, or is this 9 through 12 solely?
Mr. Santri will be talking about that, too. So I think we're expanding that, too.
Okay. So that, awesome. Can't wait to hear about that. And homecoming. So, so in that loop, people can come and view if they're not attending the game and they simply want to see the float.
They're not attending the game. Yep. It's totally open to the public, and then you would have to go through a different gate to get access to the game.
Right.
Paid access to the game.
So that the public at large will have a chance to view the floats.
Yep. But you won't want to be after the mouth of the, where the digital sign is, where the parade used to process down to.
Right.
To the student parking lot. It won't go that distance anymore. So the, actually, there's probably better viewing areas going up, so.
Great.
Questions?
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Santri?
Thanks for having me here to talk about, you know, what a fantastic start we've had to the school year at LMS. And that's just not coming from my biased opinion, but, you know, feedback from parents and feedback from students and feedback from our staff, and just what a strong and a smooth start we've had to the school year this year. It's just, it's just been wonderful. So usually, the first week in October, I'm up here reciting MCAS scores. We do not have MCAS scores this year because of our change over to the online testing. They needed to do some reconfiguration. Those won't be available until mid-October, and I think a public release is sometime near the beginning of November. But that gives me the great opportunity, instead of talking about some dry MCAS scores, but really makes a great middle school. And that's providing experiences and opportunities for kids so that they can grow and they can learn, and that they can find their passion, and that they can determine if that's something they want to do in high school or all throughout life. So in particular, in particularly this year, that we have a higher opportunity for clubs and activities for kids at the middle school level. So currently, we have 300 students that are involved or want to be involved in a club and activity at the middle school. So that's out of 426. That's about 70%. So that's amazing, and it's just something that we're proud of. Our middle school cross-country club has about 75 students. They're actually 3-0, they're undefeated. Tonight, they, the boys had seven of the top 10 scores, nine of the top 10 scores, I apologize. Girls had seven of the top 10 scores. Just a wonderful opportunity for kids to just get out and be, and be part of a club or a team or an activity or however you want to do it. And we've had an incredible response to our Science Olympiad this year, which is one of the national, leading national science and engineering competitions. So we have over 50 students that are signed up for that, and that's something that we were unable to offer to students last year. So this is new. We have three different teachers that are help running that program, and there's 22 events that you can design and work with, an engineering-based type thing that you compete against other schools. One of our teachers is very passionate about it, and he wants to bring our kids into these, into these performances and see how well they can do. So just another great opportunity. This morning, we had ski and snowboard signups, and 150 students from the middle school came down.
For the club?
That were for the club. Absolutely.
They're signers.
So that's a, it's a little daunting, but we don't want to turn away, so that would be an additional bus, but it would also be additional monies we would be able to pay for a bus.
Oh, yeah.
It would mean additional chaperones.
That's what I was thinking.
It was like the most before that.
You know what? In 4th grade, when I had these kids as 4th graders, we had the same intake, uptick, I'm sorry, in extracurriculars. Like, they wanted to do cross-country. They wanted to do after-school things.
Wow.
So it's just like, if we provide the club or the opportunity or the activity, it seems like they just want to grasp onto it. So this was the first calling down during homeroom with 150 kids, so we'll see what that weeds out to be.
Right.
But that's about 90 kids more than we usually take for the ski club. So a problem I always want to be able to have to manage is that many kids wanting to do an activity.
Oh, yeah.
So I just thought that was wonderful. Photography club also continues to be a wonderful activity for kids. 25 kids this year are in our eight-week photography club. I know if you've been in the middle school, you've seen some of their work that's hanging above our collaborative space, and it's just beautiful. You would think that it was done by a professional if you walked by. That's just an amazing opportunity for kids. Student government continues to be popular. We have about a dozen kids that are doing student government. They're involved in planning our semi-formal dances and our fundraisers, and they do other works with the community service and some other important work like that, and that is available for kids 6 through 8. There used to be 7 and 8, but now we're having 6, 7, and 8. I have a new games club that we're trying to start this year. It's an eight-week program. Myself, Annika Scott, and Rob McGrath, we're going to be the leader for that. Kids just want to come in and play board games on Fridays after school. They can come in and hang out and have a safe place in order to just kind of be who they want to be and, you know, have some social time with each other. We also have our yearbook club, which we have every year. We have Spanish club, and we have French club that's available to our 8th graders. We've teamed up with the high school, National Honor Society. We're able to offer peer tutoring for students in the middle school on Tuesdays with National Honor Society students, from like 2:30 to 3:15, when another great opportunity, being in our co-located buildings for our National Honor Society kids to pass down to our middle school kids, just a little bit of extra help when they need it. And during the school day, I think you know, one of my big pushes this year is Genius Hour. So Genius Hour is really about putting learning back on kids, being able for them to develop and find what their passion is, and then research it, and then report out to the community or the world on what they had learned for that. So first year, we're trying to figure out how to do it. Everything's going pretty well. We went by our book from A.J. Giuliani. We've talked to some other teachers, some of the ideas that we already have this year, I just wanted to bring up. These are examples of things that kids are passionate about, and they want to be able to do the self-learning. We have one presenting on the science of human dreams, on the anatomy of brains and hearts. Some students are creating their own electronic cookbook online. Some are writing short stories that choose their own endings. Some are engineering and designing their own model cities with recycled materials. And these are just a few examples that I picked out today when I was walking around with Genius Hour. So I'll be able to update you as I come to our school committee meetings to see how that's going, and at the end of the year, I hope to have a celebration where I can show the products that are happening, even if they're on a Chromebook, or if they're web-based, or if they're, however, whatever product the child is creating about what their passion is, to be able to show that off to our community. That's all I had about our, which I'm very proud of, about all of our extracurricular activities, things going on in the middle school. Just, I think that's what, like I said, is what makes a successful middle school, is to have as many opportunities for kids to kind of figure out what their niche is, so when they go into high school, they have a better idea of what they'd like to do. The question about baseline concussions.
Yeah.
We are, every student is going to have the opportunity to get baseline concussion tested. So that's going to happen, I believe, November 14th and 15th.
So they're a separate date.
There are a separate date, but that is going to be happening during the school day. We think it's that important that we're going to be able to test kids during the school day.
That's fantastic.
I'm sorry. And depending on what the, how many people sign up for it, we do have the possibility of doing an additional third day if we have to do that. But from talking, the people that are going to be doing the testing, we can do about 18 kids an hour. So we'll be able to rotate that through, hopefully, during special areas or enrichment classes, so the impact of the school day will be minimal. But I do think it's that important that we do it during the school day. The only other thing I could think about is school advisory council, that we've had that set. Our parents are Amy Powers, Jessica Frank, Liz Ortero, and Brendan Kibbe will be part of our school advisory. Jim Leveque will be our school, our school committee representative. Our first meeting is on October 24th at 4:00 at the LMHS Administration Building. All right?
Great.
Any other questions? Or any questions?
Just a comment. Big E loved hearing that the shift into that being a field trip.
Yes.
I just think, I'm shocked when I go around and hear how many people who grew up in this area have never been to the Big E.
I know.
So what a great opportunity, and it happens at a time of year when it's busy, so a lot of families don't get out there.
I know.
So what a great chance for kids to go and experience it.
And I got nothing but positive feedback about that also. What a beautiful day for the kids to get down there to the Big E. It was a gorgeous day. It's a little tricky scheduling those September field trips, because they're right when kids get back, and you got to secure the bus, but it went flawlessly. So I hope we're going to be able to make that a tradition.
Yeah.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santri.
Well, Mr. Spatafino, you forgot to ask about your school advisory council. You need volunteers, right? Aren't you still looking for parents? Did you get feedback? Oh, okay, good.
So we may have to have an election.
Ooh, now we need an election. What a funny turn of events. Okay.
That's great.
That's good.
Ms. Champagne? Welcome.
Thank you. Give you name. Thanks for having me.
Although Mr. Santri is a hard act to follow. My goodness, he had so many good things to say.
But you do, too.
I do. I do. We also had a wonderful start to our school year. The, first of all, all of the work that was done over the summer, we had the asbestos removal. I think you guys were aware of how tight that timeline became.
Yeah. Yeah.
Trying to get things ready for the opening of school and somehow miraculously that worked out. So we have beautiful new tiles, both on the first floor, floor as well as the ceiling tiles. Looks great and some new lighting. We also have the sixteen cameras installed and I know that the IT department has been working on completing that work so that that software is supposed to be up and running very shortly and so that we'll be able to take a look at that. So that was quite an upgrade in terms of a security system for Turkey Hill and we're very appreciative. Let's see, so many things going on. We have girls on the run this year, which was kind of a leap of faith. We talked about that last spring. We have actually twenty-six girls who attend every Monday and Thursday afternoon. We have Nicole Tharian from the middle school who serves as the coach and three of our staff members who serve as assistant coaches, as well as one parent who volunteered. So that's how we were, because actually we had a waiting list, it was supposed to be only twenty girls, but with the addition of the other parent, we were able to bring it up to twenty-six. So that's a ten-week program. Seems to be going pretty well right now. So we look forward to seeing them in their five K. I think it's in early December as they get to do that. We had school photos already. Jen Giles came to our school, did a phenomenal job. I had explained to Loxie, I was so impressed by the support staff she had. She had five or six people with her. So the lines were smooth, the registration tables, someone to guide the kids where to go. She had two stations set up on the stage, as well as a station over on the side of the cafeteria for the group shots. It was very professional and I think that parents are gonna be pleased with how those photos come out. So really enjoyed that. We had, shortly into the school year, we had our penny wars, which I think you all know about that. It was pretty amazing.
Where's your hat and beard?
Yes. Well, speaking of which, yes, okay. So one thing at a time. Our penny wars was a week-long fundraiser, you know, facilitated by the PTO. We raised over six thousand dollars with just kids just bringing in coins and dollars and whatever they could, so generous from the community, it really was. And all of those, all of that money will go to defray the cost of field trips. Of course, the payoff was that Mr. Adams agreed to be duct taped to the wall and Mrs. Champagne foolishly agreed to dress as Abraham Lincoln and have a dance party. I did notice, Ms. Bertrand, on your Facebook page, parents were inquiring where that video was. So Lynn Maribello, one of my staff members, and Danielle Salona, actually, they both took video and photographs and I'm trying to upload it, I really am. Because we had a great assembly after it was done. Mr. Adams strapped to the wall and me looking as silly as possible in the Abraham Lincoln outfit. So, but great fun. I think the kids really enjoyed that. Some of the other cool things that are happening, we have worked out a way to have chorus on Tuesdays, Tuesday afternoons. Fourth grade has the opportunity. There are about fifty kids who signed up. Fifth grade has the opportunity, about twenty kids who signed up. And all third graders are getting an opportunity to have chorus, yep. So that's working out. Band, we have Karen Wardwell and Jeff Sheldon are coming down on Mondays and Thursdays during the school day, it's the end of the school day, to offer band for our students. For, it's fifth grade, fifth grade band is the opportunity there. I think about twenty kids are doing that. Nature's Classroom is going on right now. Are you checking your cellphone to see if you got any photos?
He's good.
I hear that they're having a wonderful time.
Weather.
Yep, great weather. Mrs. Okerman went up there for, just to help them settle in. I think Mr. Adams plans to go up tomorrow, so, but I've heard from them that they're having a great time. There was only one, one parent and child who had the time wrong for a departure. You know, the time was seven forty-five and at eight-thirty, they were showing up at school. But we were able to connect them to the bus about halfway to Beckett. So they, they were able to join, no problem, got them in there. So, so they're having a good time. We, I want to give a couple of nods, first of all, to the Lions Club. They offered some nice scholarships for Nature's Classroom. We really appreciate that. The other recent gift we were given was from North End Mazda dealer. They have a Subaru Loves Education program and they gave us some beautiful science books, nonfiction science books, in groups of ten and twenty for our students to enjoy.
Did you bring the books?
I didn't, I'm sorry. I think she said that I should have. I apologize. I can bring it next time though, but, or if when you come to the school, I'd be happy to show you. So we really appreciate the generosity of those community organizations. Let's see, I think, well, you know, we have six new staff members this year and we had to wish a fond adieu to Coach K.
Oh.
Yep, yep. Last Friday was his last day. So, but we have Julie Ferdella who's taking over for him. She's doing a great job, as are all of our new staff members, so we're really excited about all of that. Okay? And SAC, our advisory council, our first meeting is Wednesday, October eighteenth. So I think we have a little bit of a scheduling conflict for Dawn Marie, so we're looking for some, some help from school committee.
Yeah, we have to talk about that.
Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you so much.
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Heidi. And Mrs. Blaisdell's here to talk about what's going on at the primary school. Welcome, Mrs. Blaisdell.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me here today. We have been off to a great start at the primary school. We're very excited about having the extended day back right in the building and parents are just loving that. You know, the building is nice and secure and the students have several rooms across the building that they have access to. There's an hour of time right after school where they have the cafeteria and the gymnasium. They have access to the technology room upstairs where they're completing their homework and using that as a project space kind of thing. And then they have the playground out on the, on the front as well that they're, that they're utilizing. They're also using the early learning and care room as a home base and if they have to be inside, the atrium is available for them. So it's been a nice, welcome back to the extended day program. The kids are really loving being there in the building. There's activities for them to do. They have a nice cart set up in the cafeteria, so there's games and things for them to play when they come in. And then they're taking responsibility to clean that up with the support of the staff and, and moving on to have their day started. It's, it's just such a much easier transition for our students to be able to just walk down the hall versus having to get on a bus and, you know, come to school every morning and then get on a bus and go to another building every afternoon. So it's, it's, it's much, it's so much more beneficial for our students to, to have it set up this way. So we're excited to have them back. A couple of things I was gonna talk to you about today were, the first thing I was gonna talk about was the Ruler approach that has been instituted this year in the classroom for our students. If you recall, we went to the Yale Institute for Emotional Intelligence a couple of years ago, rolled that out to our staff and our staff became familiar with Ruler. You know, Ruler is, you know, part of the anchors for emotional intelligence that was brought to our staff last year. It's a social-emotional learning, it's part of our social-emotional learning curriculum that we are using with our, our students. Obviously, we use responsive classroom strategies and we really felt that there was a hole there where we really weren't looking at and helping our children with how to deal with their emotions. So this brings that to our students' learning. Ruler stands for recognizing emotions, understanding the causes and consequences of emotions, labeling emotions to describe feelings precisely, expressing emotions to communicate effectively, and then regulating emotions to promote learning. And there are four anchor tools that we are gonna be teaching our children this year and a lot of the classes have actually started that process with rolling out a charter in their classroom. And the charter asks our children, children, how do you want to feel when you come to school each day? Mr. Sparks, because he is in the looping process and he's in the second year with his students, was able to already initiate that with his students. And some of the words that they came up with are just amazing. They said they would like to be heard, they would like to be respected, they would like to be, you know, feel happy. All of those kinds of words were words that they came up with. He actually had trouble cutting it down to just five. So he kept them all. And this is something that they, the students really felt strongly with, that these are the things that they wanted to feel. So then they had the discussion about, well, if you want to feel that way, you know, how, how is that gonna look? You know, what does that look to be heard? What does that look like to be happy in, in your learning and, and listened to? All of those kinds of things. So they've done that, they've set the charter up, it's up on the wall, and they refer to it often and talk about that when, when people are feeling like they're not being heard. So we're, we're very excited about the possibilities that this is gonna present for children. The four anchors are the charter, a mood meter, the meta moment, and a blueprint, okay? And each one of those brings a different aspect and teaches children different skills about learning about their emotions and the emotions of others, and then how to regulate those emotions and bring their best self to a learning opportunity that's presented to them. So we're very excited about that. We'll be sending home parent information as well, so parents can start to initiate and develop their own charters for their home, as well as bringing in a mood meter and being able to talk about feelings that are occurring at home. So I, I really do envision children asking their parents to take a meta moment. So we'll see how that goes. So we're very excited about that. I talked about a little bit about extended day. I wanted to talk about miles for miles. And I wanted to talk about miles for miles because it's something that has benefited our school tremendously. The, the primary school, you know, has won the school, the school award the last two years in a row. And we've been able to use that for, to bring in Tiger from Plymouth University or, in New Hampshire, which is a great social-emotional addition, you know, curriculum addition to what we're already doing and what we're already teaching children. So they are going to be, the PTO is sponsoring that fundraiser on October fifteenth. We encourage everyone in the community to come out and to participate, either in walking, running, or biking. You can register online or the day of the race, the, if you register online, you can go to milesformiles.com and register there. There'll be a five K run and walk, a one-mile fun run, and two-mile safety bike ride. And of course, if you check off Lunenburg Primary School as a child.
I was waiting. I was waiting, I'm like...
I understand Turkey Hill was actually needing to register.
Oh, really? Whoa! Smackdown, smackdown!
Two years in a row, Lunenburg Primary School, just wanted to say. Healthy competition, right? And please sign up and come on out. It's a great community day to be out there and support the schools. The PTO does a great job in raising the money and those go for lots of different things in, in all of the schools, technology and, and things that the typical budget doesn't, doesn't support. And then the last thing I need to talk about is the fabulous staff that we have at the Lunenburg Primary School and, and the parents that we have and the students that we have at Lunenburg Primary School. Everybody has just been really thrilled about the start of the school year, feeling like their children are comfortable, the children are happy coming to school each day. The teachers are expressing that the students are being very responsive to the, the learning opportunities that are presented to them and excited about that, the new learning that's going on. So it's been a great start. Our school advisory council did meet already. Dawn Marie came, but we do have Wendy Bertram as our school advisory or our school committee representative.
Maybe not, you might get stuck with me. We might get a swan.
Oh, we might get a swan, okay. That's okay.
We have to chat about that.
That is fine, absolutely. We'll take, we'll take whoever would like to come, okay? Julie Bertram is our community representative on the committee. Kristen Burns, Jared Perrine, Tiffany Tovaris was our newest member who was voted in at the open houses that we had. Etta Murphy is our preschool representative. Vicky Barber is our second grade representative. Krista Palmer is our first grade representative. And Nancy Murray is our kindergarten representative. So it's a nice group. We've had our first meeting and people reported out the, started the school year and how that has gone and the feedback from the parents at the committee meeting was very positive. So we were very happy about that. Do you have any questions for me?
I, I'm gonna report out on our, the school council meeting, but I just wanted to add, will you tell everyone how many minutes it takes, it's taking to empty the school out? That was so impressive.
Yeah, from start to finish, it's about ten minutes.
With all those little feet.
Wow.
Wow. The pickup line, then, the pickup line must be going much better than...
Pickup line is actually shorter this year, I believe.
Yeah, well, you got rid of, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow. That's highly impressive.
The three to four times that I was clocking and it was about ten minutes.
Wow, that's amazing.
And that's with making sure that everybody is an extended day in the, in the back room. So I've been able to really push our end time back significantly from what we had done last year. We had to start earlier to get all the extended day kids on the bus and get the attendance and do all that and get them out the door and then go into our runs, so.
And I believe that's a similar positive response has happened at Turkey Hill as a result of the extended day programs being in the buildings and not needing to do that transfer, so.
It's been very positive. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I just had a few more things from the superintendent's report. I wanted to let you know that in September, I came to you with an early enrollment update. At that point in time, we had one thousand six hundred and forty students that were attending every day and in seats. We've increased one since then. We're at sixteen forty-one. We have increased in the number of students that are either placed out of district or are coming in only for related services. So now we're up to sixteen fifty-seven when we include all those students in our enrollment, so that's enrolled in our schools as opposed to the sixteen fifty-one. Now, the majority of those, in fact, four of those additional students that were added there are actually only receiving related services. So they're not placed out of district, they just come in part-time. And one of those students who receives related services and comes in part-time is at fifth grade. Usually, we see that at the primary level in the preschool program, but we do have the one fifth grader as well. So I wanted to point that out because while we've had additional out-of-district placements, we've gone from eleven to sixteen. As you can see, four of those are those part-time students in our school, so there was only one out-of-district placement that has happened since the start of the school year. Just to give some perspective in terms of what that means, when we look at in seats, attending in Lunenburg Public Schools, we look back a year, we've increased twenty-seven students. We look back two years, we've increased sixty-four students. So we're seeing that growth in our enrollment. We're grateful to see it continues at, at a pace where we can use the next bunch of year to prepare for those increases. And I know you all are aware of the number of classrooms that we've added as we've gone along, how we need to tweak what we're doing with the special areas, the music art, et cetera, to keep those balanced as, as we go from five to six and, and just the number of classrooms that we have, age building. The principals are gone now, but I know how hard they work in order to ensure that all of that wide range of services are provided, our students and that are, I know how committed the school committee is, along with the rest of us, in managing those class sizes and keeping them as low as possible. So that's an update, we'll post it at the, at the website. It's, you know, not that dramatically different from what we talked about. A few options and we'll continue to do this. The October one report is a very important report for us and that's because that's when they do the... And just also wanted to point out that we currently have 42 students that are enrolled in our schools under the choice program. The majority of those are ninth grade on up. We have 15 choice students in ninth grade, 11 in 10th grade, 10 and 11th grade, and three in 12th grade. And then we have one student in our ACE program that's also a school choice program student. The two other students are in the seventh grade level, choice students, because one year, a while back, we opened those.
It was special.
Absolutely. That's not typical to see. Usually it's ninth grade on up, but we did have those at a point in time. So that's the enrollment. We're looking forward to, just want to remind everyone, of course, there is a holiday on Monday. There's no school. And our staff returns to a day-long professional development day. We're really focusing on all our new curriculum efforts that are going on, so all our task forces will be meeting. The major effort we're underway in all of those curriculum task forces this year is to create what we like to refer to as a parent-friendly curriculum that will put out can-do statements that if you have a fourth grader, there's a two-page document that will provide you the information of what your child can do as they become proficient at that particular grade level. We know our curriculum documents have a lot of words in them and they're really built for educators a lot of the time. And so we wanted to continue our efforts across the board in creating this document for our parents. And our teachers will be selecting those critical, essential skills. You know, our curriculum frameworks have many, many outcomes on them, so the teachers will be developing those can-do. So that is an effort that will be going on across the year as well as just continuing to enhance and develop those new units. You know, in science, we're making a major transition into the new science standard frameworks. We invested a major amount of funds in new science materials in order to come into alignment with the new science standards. Our teachers have just really been very enthusiastic and are rolling up their sleeves to get into it. And it means a lot of change for the teachers because those science standards changed quite a bit, particularly at the middle school level. We'll be working with the ELA. We'll continue that. I know that Ms. Floydol is out here and she continues to work with the high school folks in finishing the update with the ELA curriculum as working with Mr. Jeff Canoia. And Eric Short continues to lead our math effort and will be coming to you before the end of the school year with both math and science curriculums updated in addition to the can-do statements for ELA and social studies, which you've already taken action on those curriculums last year. So you can see that effort continues to develop and refine and we have a lot of enthusiasm. So those task force members, usually there's about 11 that are associated with those, will be working themselves as task forces in the morning. And then in the afternoon, some of their colleagues will be joining them from the other grade levels who might have not served on, there's not too many people that weren't on one of those four task forces. And so they'll be, when we only have five, we have five teachers per grade level or six teachers per grade level. You can see how that will take up most of your teachers. But there are some that are going to be staying in the buildings for the initial part of the day, building those instructional units, continuing some of that work that we began this summer. And then they'll join the task force members in various content areas in the afternoons to do more with the can-do statements. So everybody will be involved in that. Our nurses and guidance personnel will be meeting together and they're going to focus on making sure we have universal guidelines for re-entry in school after students have been out on extended illnesses or hospital placements or those kinds of things. So we want to make sure that that's a smooth transition. We also want to make sure that across the schools, the expectations remain the same in terms of how our staff's going to respond, the processing for bringing them in, that the expectations from the nurses and how they're communicating with the parents and the documentation, they mean, they need, that all is consistent. So Carolyn Fitch is going to be leading that effort, working with the guidance personnel. Our paraprofessionals are going to receive some training from Mary Young and our BCBA and also Kristi Scuta, who's our BCBA. Our special education teachers are working together K through six and three through four. They'll be working together to ensure that as students are transitioning with their IEPs, that that's smooth as well. Because you know, those IEPs, you can't have all of the fifth grade IEPs at the end of the year in order to get kids over to the middle school. So that transitioning process occurs throughout the year for those transitions that are made from building to building and we want that to be smooth process. So our special education teachers are going to take some time to really work on that and make sure that goes smoothly for our students and parents as well. And who else? Have I left out anybody? All our art, PE, health, and music folks will meet K through 12, so they'll be able to work on can-do statements. They can also be working on some of their curriculum alignment. It's rare that those individuals have a chance to get together as a K through 12 group, so that's always valuable time for them as well. So that's an overview of what's happening on the 10th and then we'll be welcoming students back on the 11th. I also wanted to let you know that we have been working with all the youth sports organizations and working on those agreements that we said we were going to do as we transitioned last year and we moved youth sports up in the priority list. Our goal in building the new school, you know, was to provide a place for the community and that's the goal that we continue to strive for. And we're working on that. It was great to have, the Bengals have been here. It's been nice to have Lysa be able to come back and join us here. You know, part of what happens with that is we have that wonderful replacement to the artificial turf. So those two groups are each paying per season $8,500. $7,500 of that goes directly to the payment that is made for the replacement of the artificial turf. So that's a 15-year commitment for them. We've also been working with our youth basketball program, who's been with us all this time and, you know, their season goes, it starts in October and it goes into March. And we've been working, we have a similar agreement with them at that cost. I know that represented an increase for them. When you calculate out the number of participants, at about 400 participants, the increase as based upon last year, what they paid is $4.79. Now, I understand they've increased their fee up to $70 at this point in time. So obviously they have other costs, which, you know, I think everybody understands that just like our athletic program, referees, cost of referees, those things. But I did want to point out what that cost was. The cost for the facilities is actually less at 21-25 than it was the year before last year, when it was 22-13 because of the configuration. So we continue to work with everyone to make sure that our facilities, that everybody has safe facilities, you know. We heard about overcrowding in some of the practices and wanted to make sure that everyone had a safe practice environment as well. So we're talking right now of up to 640 hours of practice time that the junior basketball program has. Then everybody has 256 hours on the fields, Lysa and the Bengals. That's their time allotment, including Saturdays. And then the Saturdays and Sundays for the basketball program is also 256. They might not need that. They're still finalizing their schedule, but, you know, based upon how that gets costs out, that's the rate that it comes out. So we were able to meet, I think, those goals that we were looking at and we'll continue to work through this process and certainly have a lot of information that will help inform that. I asked about Lysa's fees and their travel teams are $120 in town, $80 for grades one and two. Below grade one is $70, just to compare some of the fees, because we talk about fees, you know, we understand this notion of wanting to keep fees as low as possible. For the Bengals' fees, their tackle football is $175, flag football is $75, cheering for grades five, six, and seven is $150, cheering in grades three and four is $75. And they have a family max of 300 for any number of football or cheerleaders or combinations there are.
What did you say that Lysa's was for in-town?
Lysa in-town, $80 for first and second.
$70 for under.
And 70 for K.
And the $120 for travel and then in addition to that, you get the, you buy a uniform and that kind of stuff. So it seems all very comparable.
Yes, very comparable.
So, and that was our.
Lysa does offer on travel a discount, an early bird discount, which they're really good about promoting. That brings it to $90. So that's 90 or 95, I can't remember, but it's under $100. So if you sign up, yes, and there's always emails reminding you, hey, don't forget, don't forget. So there is an opportunity to, you know, have that be even more reasonable on the travel and because you do have to purchase a uniform on your own, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And are you completed?
I am.
You're completed. Okay. And Eliza isn't here, but Mr. Spatafino did her report. School building committee report?
No activity.
None. So we have old business, the confirmation of the appointment of James Michael Cassidy as the new business manager slash HR director.
That's right. I'm so pleased to once again ask the school committee to confirm the appointment of Mr. James Michael Cassidy. Mike is how we'll refer to him going forward. Mike will be joining us for all our budget meetings. Mike comes to us from the Lowell Public Schools, where he served as the assistant business manager there, as well as an HR director, and had some time in other departments in Lowell before he moved over to the schools, but the bulk of his time has been in schools. We're really looking forward to him joining us. His first day formally onsite is going to be the 10th. He's made several trips over. We were hoping that he might be here tonight to be able to be introduced, but he had to attend the Lowell School Committee meeting, so, you know, he still is on their dime. So his contract is for $104,000 this year and it's a three-year contract with a 3% each. And I just recommend and ask for your official confirmation in this public setting for Mr. Michael James Cassidy.
Is this, are you looking for a motion? Yes, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint James Michael Cassidy as business manager, HR director for the Lunenburg Public Schools.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, Mr. McCullough.
Mr. McCullough is here. Welcome, Mr. McCullough. Thank you for joining us. We're going to talk a little bit about waivers and then we're going to share some brainstorming that we've done about gate fees and incentivizing around registration time and just putting some ideas on the table because our goal is to have families out supporting their athletes and to continue to work to keep our fees as low as possible, so.
That is true.
Welcome. But let's talk about eighth grade waivers first.
Okay. As you know, we've relied on eighth grade waivers for a number of years, going back probably 10 or 15 years. Prior to moving into the new building, we were on a four-year period where we were an eighth through 12 school, so we got out of having to apply for the waivers, because if you're under one principal, you automatically can take the eighth graders if you want. When we came back into the building and had two separate principals, then we had to go back to the eighth grade waiver process. And to say the least, it didn't work out so great. But what we're going to do moving forward is eliminate a couple of things that were problematic this year, mainly involving the eighth graders in any kind of tryouts on teams that have tryouts until after the high school students' tryout. And then reevaluate the need for eighth graders and then add them afterwards in their own tryouts following the high school tryouts. So it would be some short period after the high school tryouts. We'll know for the upcoming winter season, we'll know very shortly which teams will need eighth grade waivers, which are probably not going to be very many. Hockey team had a try, I had a sign-up last week. Their numbers are more than they can handle in all likelihood. Unless something dramatically changes, the hockey team will not need eighth grade waiver. I don't anticipate that the basketball teams will need an eighth grade waiver, based on looking at the numbers from last year, the number of kids who graduated and the number of kids who were interested as eighth graders last year. I don't believe we're going to need that either. Skiing, the ski team is not eligible for the eighth grade waiver because of the co-op situation there. The indoor track teams will probably ask for an eighth grade waiver again this year as they had last year. We had six girls, eighth grade girls, who came out for the team last year. Even though we opened it up to eighth grade boys, we had zero eighth grade boys on the team. And there were a large number of senior boys on that team last year who graduated, so that number's going to be very small. But by publicizing that ahead of time, that we're not going to, we're going to go through the high school, nine through 12 first, do the tryouts for those teams that have tryouts, and then move to open it up to eighth graders. We'll do the sign-up and everything after that and then we'll keep just some of that confusion out of the equation.
Mr. McCullough, with our process with eighth grade waivers too, we also have inserted that piece where if there's a need determined, Mr. McCullough and the two principals will sit down and discuss that in terms of, do we need a waiver? And if so, about how many students do we think is appropriate that we'll be looking for? And that recommendation will come to me and I'll inform the school committee at that point in time because that way we're better able to keep you in the loop as the numbers are developing. I believe this will be a process that will be more predictable and transparent in how we are doing it. And not having the eighth graders at the tryouts going forward, I think, will avoid some of the expectations that were set just with having them present there versus if we put out another call and say, okay, now we need some more students on these teams. They can come from eighth grade and this is how many we're looking for. So I think that will be a process that will, people will be better able to wrap their minds around how it works. Because it is confusing. It's a confusing process and I think coming off of four years of being an eighth through 12 where we didn't ask for waivers and then going into a waiver request.
And it's still not a perfectly clean process. Because of the timelines that we fall under the MIAA, where realistically, to meet the regulations, I have to apply for those waivers now.
Right.
But after, over the last several years, they have realized that we try not to apply for the waiver unless we need it. So it often then has to wait to at least the sign-ups and sometimes even right up to the start of the season. And that's problematic because it's a lengthy process for filling out the paperwork, involves the records for the last couple of years, the rosters of the teams for the last two years and the graduates and that before they look at it. So they take a good look at it. But we have shown over the last several years that we take it seriously. We're not just adding to teams if we don't need the eighth graders. So the league, it also has to pass a vote of the league athletic directors and we've gotten the unanimous vote each time we've asked for it because even though we've asked for it, I've shown. We're not just adding to teams if we don't need the eighth graders, so the league, it also has to pass a vote of the league athletic directors and we've gotten the unanimous vote each time we've asked for it because even though we've asked for it, I've shown them that we've asked for it in several cases and then we didn't use it because we didn't need it. So we didn't just add kids to teams when we didn't need it. And it always holds true that if you cut a single student from your team in grades nine-through-12, regardless of how many you have on your team, you cannot have an eighth grade waiver. So the eighth graders cannot displace kids on the high school team. So if you make a cut, you're ineligible for an eighth grade waiver and not allowed.
Are the numbers for the fall sports teams adequate? You know, the, the numbers that you, you know, we have the numbers of what ended up in golf, cheering, cross country, field hockey, football, girls soccer, and boys soccer. Are those adequate numbers or have we fielded an adequate team for those?
In all of them except for cross country.
Okay.
Those numbers, a few kids left, a couple of kids changed their mind and things like that, so the cross country numbers for boys actually at the bare minimum. If someone's sick, then the team forfeits.
Okay.
So.
Is that not at 15?
What's that?
15?
It was at 15. Currently it's at 11.
Okay.
Do you have eighth grade waiver for that?
We do.
So.
Currently we have two eighth grade boys on the cross country team.
Okay, yeah, I know, okay. But did they ask any of the other cross country boys in the club, the middle school club, if they wanted to go up?
Not yet, but we're kicking around that idea.
Yeah.
So for some kids, it's a tough choice.
Right.
So, you know, we don't want to force or make it appear that way.
There are just so many.
Right, and that's the nice part is several years ago, the team has done one of these over the years because the class of 2017 had a huge number of kids in the middle school cross country program and they came into the high school cross country program and they dominated it. Like a lot of, they were one through eight on the team and nobody else was getting, so some kids chose not to be a part of it because they started out that way as eighth graders. They were really dominant on the team, so it kept them. And that's kind of typical in a lot of our sports teams when you have a large group from one class, other kids in the classes immediately behind them tend not to come out for a team. So it's been cyclical on that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So a couple of questions. Dates for deadlines, have you thought about either shifting those or really putting a firm deadline there because in the past, that's been, the deadlines have been soft and that seems to have caused some issues?
Yes.
So would that help in terms of waivers to be able to, if an eighth grade one is needed, then getting those kids, those eighth graders tried out and with the team sooner if need be, like if, if the deadlines were really held?
It's tough because, and then we're sort of in a rules problem there as well as far as the eighth grade waiver, as the waiver goes. If we set a deadline of November 15th, you sign up for the team for the nine-through-12 and on November 29th, when the season starts, if three sophomores want to come out for the team and I'm saying, no, you can't come out for the team, that's not a comfortable position to be in and I'm not sure how we would want to deal with that because then am I, rules-wise from the organization that oversees us, am I now cutting upperclassmen to make? So I think by going through the tryouts for the upperclassmen, which usually is two days.
Yep.
And then certainly when the tryouts start, we're going to be pretty sure whether we're going to need eighth graders or not, but then we keep, we take all those, obviously if we're going to look at a waiver, we're taking all of those kids. So they get placed on varsity and JV. The day afterwards, we do the tryouts for the eighth graders. We can't go real long because there's only eight days from the time you start till you have a game, so we really need those kids immediately. So it would just be two days, let the upperclassmen do their tryouts and then we'd know, you know, at that point, we can open up, have a day for sign-ups. Kids could certainly even put their names in early if they understand that it's going to be, you know.
I think that's our problem is that.
I, yeah, I think that's, that's a slipper slope.
I think people aren't, are not understanding that, that that does not necessarily mean you're on the team.
I think if they understand there's a hard deadline for them to bring their paperwork in, say on Wednesday, Thursday, and then we do tryouts on Thursday, Friday or something like that, but it is all time-sensitive and, and there is an urgency there to get it done.
I, I think that one thing that we had talked about before is just really communicating, increasing our communication that deadlines are deadlines and there are reasons why we have them and that this is something that we, you know, there are always going to be exceptions to that, emergencies or things like that, but you know, we really need to sort of have our community meet the deadline and, and make a decision by then and I know that that is hard. It's going to be sort of one of, I anticipate if that is the case and that there are going to be people who miss the deadline and then are upset, but you know, we can only do what we can do with the information that we have at the time.
And also, do you have, so that when, if you need to meet with the principal, building principals regarding a need, do you have numbers from each sport? Not like the highest end of, we could take up to this, but what is, so that, you know, what is
Ideal?
Your ideal number, not, you know, not a padded-out number, not, it would be awesome if we had X number, but what is the ideal number so that you can then best work with
Yes.
Information, so you have that from each team?
And what's great is the administrators, they have a really good grasp of the athletic program to begin with and they're familiar with it. They certainly attend enough events to know what's going on, so it's an easy discussion and we can go back and forth on numbers and things like that and, and set some numbers for that, but there's, there's within a short range for most programs, there are ideal numbers there, you know, especially when you're indoors with basketball, you don't want 20 kids on your team because they're not going to play, you know, so. But you're still, each team needs a number of kids to make sure they can have a full practice, especially if someone's injured or something like, so usually you're in the 12-to-14 range and a lot of times the coaches look at the kids that they know are coming back and they know if they're going to need the two more or the two less and, and things like that, but we're usually within a short range of, of students for that.
So this, this process will provide more eighth graders the opportunity to at least try out if we are going to add because you'll make an announcement that we're, where you have a waiver, we're looking to put an additional two or three or whatever that number is, eighth graders on the team, correct?
Correct.
And then you'll have the tryouts.
Correct.
But that announcement will go to all the eighth graders and there'll be equal opportunity, but they can't try out unless they turn in paperwork.
Right, they need to have paperwork turned in, so.
That's the other piece of all of this.
I was going to say, does, so their paperwork gets turned in after the high schools because you don't even need to fill out paperwork because they know.
No.
They shouldn't because.
That's the confusing part, yeah.
Right.
I'm understanding this, if I'm understanding this correctly, if you say, we need two pla, two more players for boys soccer.
Right.
And you only get two eighth grade players who come and bring their paperwork after the, everybody else has been settled, then there don't, there's not a need for tryouts?
There's no need for tryouts.
Because if you're just.
I don't think there is if they're looking for two players.
Right, I just want to make sure that that's under.
But if five come out, then three are going to, no, that three are going to be cut.
So there will be, so there would be guidance around knowing, we need three more players or four more players and that information would be conveyed so that the expect, so that if there were eighth graders coming, they would know, geez, there's 10 of us and they only need three for the team. It's not, well, we'll take all 10 to have extra.
Very clear, it has to be very clear.
Yes, they, they, we will set that number in the meeting with the principals before we even get to that point.
Yes.
And we know, what are we looking for, for basketball?
Right.
You know, we know maybe the JV team's a little bit, one or two bigger than the varsity team and, and those are the things you look at during the varsity, during the high school tryouts because you know what the mix is and there may be some kids that are going to slide back and forth between the two teams. So it's, it's something that's based on the, the athletes you have in front of you because based on that, you may need one or two more or, you know, so there are small variables for a basketball team. Certainly there are bigger variables for a soccer team because there are more kids, but it's still a very small range. You're talking about two or three kids from what you may decide to do with the numbers.
And I think for parents, the other thing, we already know, we just heard Mr. Santri talking about every club they form, 60 kids come out or 160 kids come out. So I think it will help parents in having all of those, that knowledge that yes, they're having tryouts for soccer, they need two eighth grade boys, that's the number of openings there are. So parents can make some informed decisions around that because it's not quite like signing up for the after-school activity anymore.
Yes.
Just revisiting the deadlines for that high school, just want to make sure I get this. So that deadline is passed, now you've had the time and said, okay, now we need two more eighth graders and in the meantime, two high school students go, oh, we forgot to turn in our paperwork.
Once the tryouts, once the tryouts are done, if they didn't attend the tryouts, our policy says they cannot be added to a team.
Okay.
So that, that's why we have to get through the tryouts.
Okay.
If you don't attend the tryouts on a team that has a varsity and JV program or makes cuts, then once the tryouts are done, you cannot attend.
Okay.
And we were talking, because deadlines do seem to be challenging at times, even the sign-ups because some of this is just.
generated by the
You know.
The lackadaisical approach to sign-ups.
One of the ideas that we came up with, that we'd like to continue to pursue if the school committee is interested in it, is to do much like LISA is doing with an early sign-up or at least a deadline sign-up incentive. And our incentive would be that they would receive a family pass for a signing up on time. And the family passes would allow the entire family to get into all the home games with the exception of the traditional ones that passes don't work for anybody for or homecoming and the Thanksgiving game and any tournament games.
Playoff games.
Yeah, so that's an idea we had, where we would incentivize folks to do that. Now would we increase the fee slightly as well to do that because, you know, at the end, we have to balance the budget, but if we were to do that, I would recommend that it be only so slightly that we do that. So we need to work through that and the numbers more. It's a concept that we just wanted to put out there and have people start thinking about. As we come forward with budget development, we can crunch some more numbers and show you how it plays out, but as I said, we want, we want the families to be able to be out there supporting their, their sons and their daughters and their siblings and enjoying these beautiful facilities that we have and an evening doing what families can do, supporting another member.
Pardon me, but that's also, we'll get to it, for the Athletic Advisory Council, that's one of the topics of, of, the teams are going to be working on that as well to come to this body with some recommendations.
Ah, okay, great.
What about the season pass?
Around admission, season pass.
Okay.
Right now, everything's on the table.
Okay.
But we'll, I'll get to that when it's my turn to speak.
Yeah, okay, okay, when it's your turn.
So we'll figure out how to sequence all of this, so your conversations, that budget's going to come up fast, so.
It always does.
We'll pass that idea along to you more formally then as well.
Okay.
So, so you're asking for permission for a winter?
The winter waivers.
Winter waiver.
Right.
To do the initial paperwork so that we're not trying to get that done after the deadline and while we're trying to meet all the other deadlines. So you would see the
Yeah, I'll get.
Email that'll come out and it'll go, it goes to the District E, which is Central Mass that we belong to as part of the MIA and the chairman of that committee gets the emails and the members of the committee review each one of those applications for the waiver. So even though we're asking for the waiver, it, it's only based on need.
Sign-ups, yes.
And
The numbers.
Reviewing those numbers again here shortly.
Yeah.
It may be that we're only applying for one or two initially.
Right. So I'll take a motion to approve the winter waivers.
I move.
The two-phase process, right?
Yes, it's a two-phase process.
Yep.
Initial waiver and then the waiver after the numbers.
Okay.
Let's go for it.
I'll make a, a motion to approve the winter waiver in this two-phase process.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And our sign-up night is right, I think it's November 1st.
November 1st is the winter sign-up.
So we moved it back a little bit just to be able to give us some time to look at all the numbers and, and get the initial, we always know forms come in afterwards and we used to do it the week before Thanksgiving, which, or the two weeks before Thanksgiving, which didn't give us much time to analyze things. So by pushing it back a little bit and the incentives perhaps in getting people to sign up early and those things will help us down the line.
Yeah.
You can blame us.
Yeah.
Everybody does.
Just follow the deadlines, folks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Just a quick note, there are a lot of great things going on athletically right now.
Oh, I know.
Team, over 200 kids out and I believe we're over 300 when you count that, cross-country, middle school and the club program, so afternoons out there, out back are just, it's just crazy.
It's thriving.
The great thing is, we're having home games, we're not transporting ourselves everywhere. I don't think the grounds have ever looked better than they do right now, the fields. Everybody that comes in has just been remarking about how great the place looks and we have those night, two night games going on at the same time. Parking's that one issue we're still working with, we're going to get through it, but the excitement at the games and I guess I can hear it a million times and not get tired of hearing people say, you guys did such a great job with the school and the grounds and I wish we had done that and other schools come in and they're kind of looking around and it's just such a great facility and waiting for it was worthwhile and I'm just excited to be part of that and the, the maintenance and the fields and everything, the place looks fantastic, so when we turn the lights on at night, it really looks great and just get more people out to games is our goal, so.
And to have all the youth teams out there, I mean, it stays busy.
There's a lot of, there are a lot of people.
Turnover, I watched the turnover the other day and it was impressive, like one team leaves, the next team goes on, I mean, it is just always.
We bumped some things back about 15 minutes with the youth teams and it's helped so much that they're not in that crush to get the parking lot at the same time, so just that 15 minutes has helped. Cause I've stood up there on top of the bleachers there and watched a couple of times and we're not missing by much, you know, but they are coming and going and the places at night and the afternoon, there's a lot going on and you got the pickleball courts going.
Oh, yeah, I've seen them.
It's just great, so after having been kind of quiet for a couple of years, it's really nice to see that people are really enjoying the facilities that we have, so.
And I'm sure so many of the parents just really appreciate not having to drive to Devon's or.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I know it's just down the road, but.
Yeah, well, it is nice.
It's still a drive.
And in October, we're home game heavy, so.
Yeah, we are.
We did a lot of traveling in September, but October, we have a lot of games to play here in October, so it should be fun.
And I see so many families, especially during the youth sport time, they come up and the kids will bring their bicycles because that becomes a pretty nice area to ride their bikes because it's not real busy at that time and mom and dad are out there, or our mom or dad are out there and able to watch the practices from up on the side of the road, it's just.
We do have some great places to watch from.
Great opportunity for building community.
It is.
So, great, thank you, Pete.
Thank you very much.
School calendar guidelines. There it is, the red line version from the last.
So I think our goal tonight was just to see if there was anything that really stood out as needing fixed or refined before we start going through three readings.
I put it in the wrong pile.
And maybe, I mean, we still have time, we'll still, even with another meeting, to give you some additional time to look at it for a couple of weeks. Ms. Foyle has it, we can get this first red line draft out to, to the other folks that participated with us and then we can eventually end up on a first reading.
The only thing that I'm wondering about, and I'm sorry I didn't notice this before, but was there a line, was it number two, was it maintain as many full, full five-day weeks as possible or was it no week shall be any shorter than?
Two and a half.
I think that we went... I saw both of those in the minutes, and I know we went back and forth, so...
Actually, wasn't it, do as many five-day weeks?
Do you remember?
There would be two bullets.
No pressure.
If my memory serves correctly, I think we talked more about the two and a half days in regards to vacation.
Number seven. It's number seven, winter vacation.
Yeah. And number, yeah, so we talked about that around vacation, that most weeks would have those five days in it.
Yeah, I think we talked about a minimum of two and a half day weeks.
I just remember that minimum, because I knew it would encompass the Thanksgiving week.
Right, but if you keep bullet, number two doesn't include the other bullets, because you have a minimum of two and a half week without, that doesn't contradict.
No, it doesn't, right.
So, that probably needs to be inserted either in with the...
The winter vacation. Or anytime.
Well, then, I was going to think, to put it back here, where maintain as many as five weeks, and then add to that the two and a half days or something, or even start with the two and a half.
In the minutes shall be less than... Right, no week shall be less than, okay. And trying to keep as many five-day weeks as possible. Yeah, that's good.
Right, because I don't even know if we, you need that line in number seven that says the school committee may choose to take the 23rd of December as a no-school day, because if we have the, that our policy is no less than...
Two and a half days. Two and a half days.
Then, yeah, you can just apply that to all of the weeks.
Okay, so put in the two and a half, take out that piece. Got it.
Okay.
I'll do that, and we might be ready for first reading, the Greens meeting.
That would be awesome.
Did you get that? Thank you, Christine.
So, new business is suggestion for policy to be reviewed and created. Ms. Foyle, would you like to come and speak?
A totally unrelated note, but to the previous conversation with the athletic director here, I coach a soccer team, well, on the days that I'm there. I coach a soccer team, school stuff gets in the way sometimes, and it's third and fourth graders, but I keep catching them, we're on the front field, and I keep catching them pulling the grass, and I'm saying, stop pulling the grass, that's newly planted grass, knock it off!
Yes, stop.
I know.
Say it with my son, so don't, no.
I don't want you to.
Could be my own son. So, I actually have three policies that I would love, the policy committee to look at.
Is this you or the LEA?
I think it's more me. Wait, no, I know, it's always really hard to separate. So, one actually stems from me a bit more as the department head, though I have received some LEA complaints as well. And the other one has LEA potential. I guess I can never fully leave my LEA brain behind, but no, that's a really good point.
There was a consensus, and that's what...
Yeah, no, so the board does know I'm bringing these concerns forward, but I think I've just had these experiences more than the whole has. So, the first one is staff conflict of interests. Do you want the number of it?
Yes, please.
So, that's 4101.02, 4101.02.
No, we did five.
Do you want me to speak to the concern, or do you?
Yes.
Want, yeah, do you want me to speak? Okay.
Yes, please.
So, my concern, and this, I've had a number of staff members come up complaining about this over the years, and it's about relatives being hired within buildings.
Yes, because they're not supposed to work in the same building.
In the same building, right. And I have had a number of staff members bringing that forward as a concern, and the superintendent knows, because we meet often, that I wasn't, in my union mind, I was not a fan of this policy when it first came out. I did voice some concerns at the beginning. And then, I've actually had an experience, a number of experiences the department had, where I've not been able to interview candidates who look like strong choices, because of the familial relationship. And so, I would love the policy committee to take a look at that. I fully understand that if someone is a supervisor, there's no way that a family member should be working underneath a super, a family member who's a supervisor. But, I do think, especially where we are a small town, and this idea of community, and people stay in this area, and when you really think about it, actually, we have more and more school personnel who are living in town and moving to town. I think we are limiting, limiting our candidate fields with that. So, I would encourage the committee to look at it with the idea of a supervisor cannot have a family member working for him or her, but I think it's a little too stringent with the way of not having family members being in the same building.
Does that also apply the way it's currently, people are more familiar with it, with the middle school and the high school, since it's the same building? Are they still...
They're different administrators.
They're different schools. They are two different, co-located, but two different schools.
And it reads, the policy reads, close relatives may not be employed in the same school or under the same administrative unit head.
So, because there are two different administrators...
It's different then. Yep. The other one, they're connected, it's two different policies. Oh, I don't have the number on one of them.
Could you tell me what it is?
Yeah, I'm about to tell you what it is. It is the acceptable use policy, so it's actually both the staff and the student. So, the one for the staff is 4119. I don't have the student number one, I just printed it off of...
It'd be 5,000.
Okay, so, but I don't know 5,000 what. So, it actually has to do with electronics, and admittedly, as a staff member, I don't love some of the things in our acceptable use policy for staff. I would love to see the student policy and the staff policy to match a little bit better, fully understanding that I am adult and the children are not adults. But, one of the things that is explicit in the staff policy is the use of personal devices on the school networks, like my cellphone or something like that, using my personal devices on the school network, and kind of what my privacies are, and what I can and can't do on that. The students don't actually have that on their policy, and as a teacher, that is a little concerning to me. I am a teacher who's actually trying to work on how do I build cellphone use into my classroom, as, especially with my seniors, as to what's appropriate, because they'll be heading into a world where someone's not going to be saying them, saying to them, put that cellphone away. So, I am fully understanding that I want to build in their appropriateness and what's appropriate for it, but I do, especially as a union person, have concerns, you know, if, if a student were to tape a faculty member and then send that out, or something like that. There's actually nothing in the policy that really supports saying, hey, student, that wasn't right. There's a little line that I can make work in it, but it's not very strong.
Which, just because I have it in terms of that policy, do you, which line is not in the student, which line are you looking?
So, for example, in the staff one, use of personally-owned devices responsibilities is an actual, it has a few bullet points within it. One of them would be the use of personally-owned devices, laptop, smartphones, et cetera, to access school networks and resources as a privilege, which is conditioned upon the staff member adhering to policies governing the school network sources. So, it's just, if you're using your phone and using the school network, it doesn't matter if it's your own device, you're still correct, have to follow those rules. And I don't know if there's legalities, like some of the notes that I've written on here are other legalities over student rights, although I would assume student and staff rights have some similarities. Number 17 on that list, which makes me cringe a little bit, staff members may have a diminished expectation of privacy in their personally-owned devices if they use devices to store school information, or use those devices to conduct school business. But, the idea, I mean, of kids using phones for projects or something like that, but if a kid, you know, kids are kids, and may move errantly. The next line, staff members may not use digital cameras or recording devices, whether or not part of a phone or other device, to record audio or visual images in school without authorization from the administration. But, I didn't know if something like that could be included for the students, that if they're using that in the classroom, there needs to be expressed authorization from the person conducting that class. It's just a concern, and, you know, I stay pretty up to date on MTA issues, and go to a lot of meetings where there are other MTA people there, and seeing issues that pop up across the state. I just, you know, want everyone to be as protected as possible.
Do you have laptops provided to you by the school?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and that is probably why that's in there, because they expect you to use your school-issued laptop while you're at school, as opposed to your own laptop?
Right, which our students have Chromebooks, like, I'm not sure, was this updated after students?
We updated, I was part of that group that updated that, so that was prior to Chromebooks.
That's it, so this is prior to Chromebooks, which the student one doesn't match them now having Chromebook. At the high school, all my students, based on the grades I teach, have their Chromebooks, have Chromebooks. So, some of that would be in there, and theirs, ours explicitly talks about personal devices, and I'll admit, until this year, I never used my personal device on the school network, my cellphone or anything, because I don't like the wording of this, but cellphone service is not so hot at the school, and so, sometimes for me to conduct union business or send off a quick email to my husband, I have to jump onto the school network, because I just don't have service in the building, and so, I can't communicate that way.
Does it come, just because it came up at the school council, the primary school council meeting, there was a conversation about different classrooms and teachers using different apps to work with parents and students, and, you know, keep people informed. So, I know ClassDojo for behavior, the Remind app, Shutterfly, things like that. So, now that we're in an age where that is prevalent, you know, as a teacher who uses the Remind app, I take a picture, I send it to the parent, you know, with an update, like, oh, we did this project today, maybe that is something that we need to think about if we're, if we have a general expectation that teachers are going to increase their communication with families with those kind of apps. Did I say that right?
And it may not be on a school-issued device.
Right, like, I think, I don't think, I don't have, I don't think a Chromebook...
You're not going to be able to do the app on, on...
No, and I don't, I actually don't have a Chromebook either, so I'm still learning Chromebooks.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't have one either.
And we always try to avoid using apps that can't be used on something that the school issues to the teacher as well.
Right.
There's a reason for it.
So, maybe that is something that needs to be discussed, because I think there are teachers who are using apps, and, you know, rightfully so, if you've gone to a professional development workshop, and you had this great experience with ClassDojo, and you're working on it with your behavior and your students in your classroom, and it's working, and it's great, then maybe that's a conversation, that's something we need, probably need to figure out. Do we say no to those things, or do we encourage teachers to, you know, make sure they're differentiating for the students in their classroom, so...
I mean, even Twitter, I'm trying to be more actively on my school Twitter account, that, but I know there are some saving issues with Twitter. Like, I do have a Twitter account that's just for school, and I do education-related stuff on that, you know, I'm trying, but I can't tweet from school, because I don't, I can't get on the network, I can't get on Twitter, it's blocked, so...
There's a reason for that.
I know, there is, but, you know, it's really interesting, because as with my seniors, I'm trying to teach them to use Twitter as a professional tool, because I've said the grown-ups have taken over Twitter, like, it's no longer a cool thing, so they roll their eyes, but it's amazing how much networking happens over Twitter. So, as much as I believe that we have to be careful with these things, we also have to be teaching how to do this, you know, correctly. Can I make another point on this?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to bring up the video, and having to get explicit permission, that's because, in the beginning of the year, as adults, as parents, we all sign these things that say, if we want our child to be photographed...
No, and I understand that, my thing as a teacher in front of the room, if a kid's recording me as I'm up at the board doing something, and I don't know that's happening, and then that on his or her own personal device...
Goes out.
And then, that goes out virally, and I, you know, somehow it comes back to me, but there's actually nothing in their policy about them using their devices to do that.
But, they're also encouraged to take pictures of their assignments, aren't they, in classes? To take pictures of the notes that you do on boards?
So, then, I would be giving expressive permission, I would be giving explicit permission to do so.
They're encouraged to do that, right?
Right. But, my concern isn't when I've said to a kid, go ahead and do that, it's when that child hasn't been given permission to do so, and does so.
So, what you're saying is there's nothing in policy to, to deter or any sort of, sort of punishment for a student who would do that.
Yeah, or something that acknowledges that this isn't how we should be behaving.
Taking video, right. Do we have, do we have evidence of students doing that?
It's happened, I mean, I, over the years, it has definitely happened. Recently, and far back as to when cellphones first came out with video recording abilities. It's, I wouldn't say it's pervasive, but has it happened multiple times? Yes.
There's different protocols by different teachers, too. I know some teachers have spots in the room where all the cellphones are left.
They have baskets.
Yep. Et cetera.
Right.
So, you know, it's, it's a broad-reaching area, it's probably a good idea, because this evolves so quickly, and so much of the innovation we hear about is on devices that we may or may not be providing to our teachers on a regular basis. So, this is an area that I think ongoing review is probably called for, so...
Okay, so then, just another one, and again, this is, I was thinking, in, last year, as my first year with students with Chromebooks, there's one of them, a point that talks about in the staff one, the protection of integrity of the school network, and staff are not permitted to circumnavigate network policies or filters by using so-called tube sites. I don't know, I actually have no idea what that means.
What's is that, tube sites?
I don't know, I don't know if it means like YouTube, or I would, I would guess it doesn't, I guess it's some go-around site, but I, not, for, for how I use technology in my classroom, not really that tech savvy. To gain unauthorized access to network resources or other user accounts or information, or to go beyond, or to attempt to go beyond their authorized access, like, that's something where, again, a third of our high school population has that, or students, you know, are using in other buildings, get their Chromebook carts and things like that, might not be a bad idea to have something like that in the student policy, too. I didn't know if you wanted that much information, I'm more than willing to come to a meeting where these get discussed, too.
That's a subcommittee.
I know, yeah.
We'll ask Mr. Maladrenos to join us for that one.
Yeah, I don't even know what that is, tube sites.
Tube sites. Great, I just admitted on TV to all the watchers that I'm not tech savvy.
I'm sure there's hundreds of watchers.
Awesome, thanks.
Do we have a list of...
We are, we work on 6,000s right now.
The full series that's up is the 6,000s.
Which is all about school committee.
Operations, policy, organizations, etc.
Handbooks, negotiated agreements.
But, there's nothing that says we can't review particular policies.
Oh, no, not at all. No, 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 this is just in order.
We just want to keep in sequence with doing a section every year, plus anything else that needs to be, too.
So, do you have any, what did you say?
I'm, I'm wondering if the naming, if, I'm asking if the wall...
The wall of remembrance, yes. We definitely want to do that.
The naming policy is on the list, and if not, can we put the naming policy, not necessarily the wall of remembrance, but the naming...
Facilities.
Facility naming policy?
But, we do have to do the wall of remembrance, too.
Right.
Yeah, so, that would be some kind of memorial policy.
Memorial policy.
Okay. Was there anything else, Wendy, politics in the classroom?
Yes, is...
There was, right?
I thought we did that last year, we reviewed that, but we can go back and look at it.
I think we need to look at that one again.
What is it?
Politics in the classroom. I've had complaints from several parents that there's too much politic talk, that's irrelevant in a classroom, and makes students uncomfortable.
And you, I'm sure you're encouraging those folks to contact the school administrator.
Of course I am.
And I know some have, and those have been good conversations, I think, between the teachers and the, and the parents and the principals. So, just, it's really important to have that, all the information around those.
Right. Anybody else, do you have any more suggestions? This is a lot, anyway.
It is a lot.
Such easy ones, too.
It's a lot, so, are we good then?
Yeah.
With the caveat that if we, when we're still in active meeting process, if something else surfaces, that we certainly bring it in.
So, at this time, should we make a meeting for that subcommittee? To begin, right? We should do something, right?
We can. You want to schedule it now, or do you want to schedule it offline?
We should schedule it. We should schedule it offline.
Yeah, we'll do it offline.
But we'll start, we'll start getting our meetings in line. Yep, absolutely.
Because Wednesdays are good days.
Wednesdays are great days, right? Okay, so, do you have information on the early literacy?
I did. I just wanted, being mindful of the time, and what a great meeting. So much good input from our community. We're so sorry for those parents who've experienced that loss. And, you know, this policy is, is a challenging policy, but an important policy, I know, for all of us to be looking at and working on. And we always want to remember. So, we have this opportunity within the, it's the zone of north central Massachusetts. And it's been referred to at various times as an innovation zone. And we're developing a partnership with several of the districts. The superintendents started meeting together. Some of the local superintendents at one point in time had had an opportunity to initiate this early literacy program called Footsteps to Brilliance. It's an online program that supports early literacy. It's wonderful because it provides for being able to do that in dual language, Spanish and English. And so it provides a lot of access to English-language learners to be able to interact with their parents or grandparents who might be Spanish-speaking and use that same platform to do it. And it toggles back and forth very nice. But it's, it's about reaching out to all of our families to provide a tool for that early literacy on devices that they use, that are part of our world every day. And this is an area that, we know we have a strong literacy program when students come to us and we start. But we also know that we have many students who start thousands of vocabulary words behind because they just haven't had the opportunity to have access to a rich literacy environment. And Footsteps to Brilliance can provide that on a platform that any parent has, an iPad, a computer, an iPhone, on an Android phone, all of those areas. Lemonster was able to have it in their community for a few years and then couldn't maintain the cost for it. Unfortunately, it was, you know, it's always around a budget piece. I know our good friends in Fitchburg put together a really nice partnership with several area businesses and were able to make it available to their school community and the entire community, actually, last year. That's where I first became acquainted with it, watched it being used in a preschool program and am very excited about what it can provide. So we started having these conversations because it is pretty expensive. And we're able to loop in the United Way of their foundation. Their focus is on early literacy. They've been involved with a different program up to this point in time. But their board has voted basically to partner in this effort and provide 50% of the cost, which is already a reduced cost because of the number of districts that are joining in, for this to be purchased by Lunenburg. Our cost per year would be $5,888, I believe was the cost. That same amount will be paid through the foundation. Plaque would be the fiscal agent for this. But the kick in all of this is it's a five-year proposition. It's a five-year perpetual license then. So you can finance this over five years, so you don't have to pay it all upfront, number one. Number two, if you finance over five years, that needs to go to the town for approval. And number three, once you pay that, you own it forever. And you get all the updates. You get the, after five years, it's yours. And you get the updates. You don't have any further financial applications after that point in time. They won't provide the professional development around it, but it's, it becomes yours, so it can continue after that, so. So all of those things really are prompting me to ask for the school committee to support, asking the community. I would prepare a more fully developed, I know I've shared a lot of the information in the website with all of you for some time now. But we would make a presentation if, if you're interested in seeing if the community will allow us to go this route. We would have to take it to special town meeting. And just this evening, I thought we'd have another meeting to actually process this. But they opened the warrant yesterday and they're going to close the warrant on October 11th.
Tuesday. Is it Tuesday or Wednesday?
So it's just a week. So we won't have the opportunity, you know, to deliberate this. Or we'd have to wait till next May for the regular annual town meeting. The financing package says basically, once we get approval, they have pushed off the first payment until the next fiscal year, anyway. So we would have the opportunity to start utilizing it this year once we enter, have permission and enter into that agreement. The first payment wouldn't come until next year, anyway.
Okay. So we would be financing our, I mean, I feel like we should speak what we'd be financing.
Yes. The, the amount that we would.
Fifty-five, ninety-four, thirty-four.
Yeah, right.
It's our portion.
It's our portion.
It's our complete portion.
Five thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. Oh, that's the United Way grant. I'm sorry.
I was going to say.
We'd repeat that to about thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars.
Right. Fifty, fifty-six times.
Over five years. Can you remind me?
Over five years?
So that twenty-eight thousand, if I'm understanding correctly, twenty-eight thousand.
No, that's the biannual play, payment. It's five thousand dollars, so it's eleven thousand to begin with.
Right.
Okay. That's the annual capital payment.
Yes, yes.
Right, but we only have to pay half of that.
We pay half of that.
So that's fifty-six hundred dollars for five years.
So I just, five times five is about twenty-eight.
So we would be financing twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Correct. Over five years.
Correct.
But then we would get the licensing updates.
So that would be for life. We would then have this program for life.
Yes. Can you remind me the recommended age range for accessing this material? Because I know that it's pre, it's pre-ked, pre-ked, so what I'm, what I would think, what I would, what I know is that, you know, the more that you increase the exposure to literacy in the younger grade levels, the higher percentage that you have, the reading proficiency as students get to third grade. I would be curious, and I totally support this, to see what, or as a presentation to the community, to show what we, what we're doing for interventions in first and second grade, you know, all of those things with Title I and all of that stuff. Those numbers are really going to be what can show people the, where we could benefit from this program. Because for this amount of money, you couldn't get someone to, you know what I mean? You couldn't pay someone to come in and do that with the kids. But if they can be, you know, engaged in these early literacy activities, and it can be through grade two, and it's a lifetime, I, absolutely.
And it's school and home they can access this.
Right, right. Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, part of this partnership, there's been a great deal of interest on the part of Fitchburg State University, as well as the Community College, talking about having their students help promote this, being at malls, making sure that all the people in the communities are aware that this is available at no cost for them. And I understand they're also talking to the hospitals. So when babies are born, they're going to be giving those moms and dads the, the information. So that can start as early as possible.
Do they have any statistics on saturation and participation levels?
I don't, but they do. And so we can bring that.
I'd be interested to know that if they, how many?
They have some pretty impressive statistics around the communities.
They are reaching, might be working out really well, but are they reaching enough? And what can we do to increase that if this works?
Well, and I think it's, the thing that I think is appealing is that even if you have members of the community who don't have access to devices that we're talking about, even in school, we then have access to these devices to differentiate the learning for students who might not have access outside of school. Or extended day could use it.
That's correct.
There's, it just has a multitude of possibilities.
The School Link Services programs, we've talked about.
The library.
I need to get over to the library and talk to them about it, but, yeah, all of those access parts, points. And United Way with that. I mean, it's just an amazing partnership.
Yeah.
To be able to do that. But it starts with, it would require the town to support that five-year.
So are we ready for a motion regarding?
To the warrant article, so that we could submit it for the next week for the special town meeting?
I make a motion to submit the following warrant article to see if the town will vote to authorize the Lunenburg Public Schools to enter into a lease agreement for up to five years for the purchase of a perpetual license agreement with Footsteps to Brilliance, with financing from government capital, for an early learning mobile technology platform.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we will put together a much more comprehensive presentation for the special town meeting.
When is that, November?
Oh, twenty-eight.
Something like that? Twenty-eighth, oh, it's twenty-eighth after.
It's a Tuesday night, twenty-eighth, right? Twenty-ninth is a Wednesday.
And I also wanted to let you know that the town manager reached out about getting together. I suggested maybe a joint meeting would be the way to do this, to have some additional conversations around TCP and what could it commentate in terms of town offices and school offices, and also looking at Turkey Hill Elementary School, because at one point in time, we had a plan that was developed that we would move central offices over there as well. So it's just really drilling down on some of those conversations, looking at our new enrollment numbers and the upgraded projections from that. But really getting that long-term view in place as everyone comes down to making some final decisions. So I will talk further with the town manager. This seems like maybe a joint workshop meeting would be a route to go around that. But let me converse more with her and see what we might be able to come up with the options.
Okay.
Okay? So, thank you.
Now we have your, we have donations to it?
Oh, we do. We had the donation from Mazda, Mazda North End, right, and Subaru, because, and of those beautiful science books. And I will get, get them and bring them because they are really nice resources for the teachers to have. And those were donated. We had the five hundred dollars from the Lions Club that helped support scholarships to Nature's Classroom. And I wanted to let you know that our very generous Adama's donor, who now has bought and has purchased or donated money so we can purchase another mobile lab over Turkey Hill Elementary School. And then the sound system, both of those are about fourteen thousand dollar donations that have come last fiscal year, this, last calendar year and this calendar year. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. The sound system is really quite remarkable in the new stadium. And I am trying to coax that individual to, allowing us to put some little kind of recognition plaque.
Thank you.
At some place on the campus, just to acknowledge the very generous donations they've made. So I recommend that we accept those with gratitude.
Make a motion to accept those donations with our gratitude. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And what I know that the, we'll, from the building level as well as from the district level, we'll get some nice thank yous and acknowledgements out on your behalf, our behalf, our children's behalf.
So that's, now we're on to the town committee meeting next week with the selectmen. Okay.
Tuesday?
What?
That meeting's on Tuesday?
That meeting is on Tuesday, the seventh. It's the selectmen's meeting, the tenth.
Okay.
Yeah. So I sent out the form. Did you all look at it?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have anything to add? Nothing? No? Okay, so then we'll go with this and the goals that we finalize in August. I found those online. And we'll just submit that. And who, we need a representative. And Jim is going to be there already, correct?
I'm going to be there already with the Architectural Preservation District Commission, yes.
Okay, so does any?
I can certainly also represent.
Right, correct. So is that okay with everyone here?
Do you get two votes? Are they voting on it?
We're not voting. As far as I know, we're not voting on anything. It's.
Just presenting.
Yeah, I.
It's more of a follow-up on the workshop that we had last August, where we're trying to get people interested in.
In participating.
Participating.
Community participation, right?
And getting the community, yeah, so it's.
And if they know a little bit about each of the committees, then they might be more.
They might be more interested to, to be involved.
Right, right. So, okay, so Jim, you will bring this and present on our behalf.
If you have the final.
We'll make a motion to, what, what did you say?
Just give me.
I'll give you the information.
He needs.
You have the original?
Yeah.
Or, okay, rather than printing the photo?
No, yeah, I'll give it to you. You don't want the photo? I'll give you the real, I think I have the real deal here. Yeah, here it is.
Do we need to make, we don't need to make.
We need to, well, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
No. And then I will forward you the goals.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, if anybody else goes and we wind up with a quorum winning.
I know, I know. That's why, no one's going to go, but you, Jim?
Nobody else wants to go.
Because we're not going to do that.
No, Jim, thank you.
We're not going to have a quorum at this meeting. Okay, and we're on to public comment again.
Public?
No, you're all good, okay. So do we have, Jim, athletic advisory report.
Yes. So we met last, on the September 26th, at the middle school. So Pete McCullough and I are kind of co-chairs. MJ Davis agreed to act as our secretary for us, so she was diligently typing up notes, which was very helpful. We had sixteen members present, which covered booster clubs from all the sports.
Yep.
We have yet to identify the student participants, though, at this point. There's still some debate, I guess, going on at the school level on who.
Really?
Needs to be, be involved, so.
Qualifications?
Yeah, qualifications, what we're looking for. One, you know, we don't want to have a parent and the child on.
Right, I get that.
So finding people who are willing to get involved, it'll happen, but we're, we still don't have those people identified.
And you have a teacher representative, too, correct?
We have, yeah, Karma.
She's as a, as a teacher?
I believe she was, she came in as a teacher, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Short?
Eric Short's also on, on the.
Okay.
He would be the teacher.
I think, I think Mr. Short is the teacher.
He's there on the hockey side. Is he the teacher?
He's there, yeah.
Well, see, there's so many, like, there's so many.
He's the hockey coach. He's the hockey coach. I don't think he's in charge of the boosters.
Yeah. I think he's a parent because he has, I think, well, he's a teacher representative.
Because he doesn't have students in the program yet.
And he can't be a parent while he's there.
Well, no, he's, he can't, I don't think his kids, his kids aren't old enough to play.
Right, right.
So he's okay not to be the parent.
He's a teacher. He's a teacher.
He's a teacher.
He's a school teacher representative.
So I thought he was a member of the boosters.
That was one of the criteria. No, that was one of the people to be on it.
Definitely needed one of those people, yes.
So content within the meeting.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, content. We discussed the things that we could work on and what the problems and perceived problems were.
Perceived, yes, yes.
And then I wrote everything out on the board. And then I went around and we voted, what's your primary objective to resolve and what's your secondary?
Did you do IBB tech, techniques?
I did a version of that.
Okay.
As, well. As, well, I've done design thinking for years as, as an employee of, of my company, so I was familiar with the concept.
Right.
Seeing it in practice and with the LAA was something different. So the top four things that we're working on is identifying transparency in fundraising. So when is fundraising going to take place? What will it be? What are we gonna use the funds for? And we plan to have that all identified and resolved by the next meeting.
When is the next meeting?
The next meeting is twenty-fifth of October.
Okay.
So the, the goal is to have this information available and, and put it on the website. So people say, hey, you guys are doing fundraiser, what's this for? We can now refer them to a website that says, oh, that's what it's for, and it's going to buy uniforms, or it's going to buy whatever, transportation. So that was a big thing. We also formed a subcommittee to address the fundraising issues and identify opportunities to coordinate, consolidate, including advertising opportunities. One of the things that was discussed in addition to that was the admissions discussion and maybe season passes or gold cards, or, you know, something that can be used to, to simplify it, and so that we don't have multiple fundraising going on at the same time. Maybe, you know, they're looking, maybe looking at seasonal fundraising as a goal. So everything is on the table for them to figure out, or to work on some recommendations on how best to address the concerns that were, that were mentioned during the meeting. We've also formed a subcommittee to address service opportunities, options for the students. There were, there was a high interest in providing service opportunities for the, the athletes.
Perhaps like being at the gate or things like that, so that we would then potentially save some money in budget instead of.
Potentially that, cleaning up under the bleachers was mentioned. There's all kinds of, of opportunities.
Of all the ball persons.
That they're going to, to discuss and, and come back with, just to provide them with a sense of, of giving back to the community. And then the next vote getter was the admissions options, family pass, season pass, that kind of stuff. So those, the subcommittees will start getting themselves organized. And our next meeting is October twenty-fifth to address that first one about transparency, and to make it, make sure that everybody understands what, what fundraising is coming, what's in process, where the money's gonna go to. Because that seems to take up a lot of Pete's time with people calling, saying, what are you asking money for again? And, and he refers them to the booster clubs, but people still call him. So that's where, where we've left that, after an hour and a half.
Wow, okay.
It took a while to get into the rhythm of, what are we doing here? Yeah, nobody quite understood, what are the problems? I don't have a problem. My fundraising is fine. And so we had to kind of address, these are the, the things that we've heard, these are the things that we're seeing, this is a perception of what's happening. So I think we got people thinking about how to start addressing some of those. Any questions?
Seven o'clock, right?
Oh, seven o'clock, yes.
Is that what time you meet?
Yeah, I was like, it is not seven o'clock.
Lunenburg Middle School, High School, the same.
Yeah, it'll be.
Middle School, Project Room.
Yeah, double check. It's the twenty-fifth. I'm pretty sure it was seven. Why did I not write that down? Okay.
We want to get it up on the school calendar for you.
Right. I'll check my folder.
Okay, thanks.
Finance Committee, don't worry.
Short and Sweet, we met there as.
Seven, yeah, sorry.
Seven? Highlights, October tenth, meeting, which we just talked about. There's a vacancy on the committee, so we're just waiting to see about that. The one thing that the Finance Committee is working on is streamlining a budget spreadsheet through all the cost centers, which is really interesting to be able to see, for example, the schools and what the budget requests have been in the past, and then have all the cost centers be able to add their budget requests. And so then you have a full picture of the entire town on one spreadsheet.
John working on that?
Yes, he is working very hard on that. And I was concentrating very hard to understand everything that was coming out of that. There was a lot of information, so, but that was really exciting to have it in one place. So that's upcoming, and the next meeting is October twelfth.
Okay, school councils.
Primary School Council. Mrs. Blaisdell really went over a lot of the things that I was gonna talk about. The only other thing that I wanted to add is that the open house was a little bit different format this year. They had everybody at one time, and while, what they did to work on the parking was that they had parking attendants that were sort of helping people park.
Okay, so it was very helpful.
Right, they parked around, right, very helpful. And then, but the feedback was absolutely wonderful, because all the specialists were there and got to give the presentation, whereas the specialists haven't been able to go to all the different nights in the past. And so that was great feedback. And then the only other thing to note is that everybody is starting on all of their academics and curricular activities, and they are going on field trips. They have a new field trip this year for one of the grade levels kindergarten is going to Hollis Hill, Hollis Hill Farms, so in October. Yeah, so they're really excited to try something new and go a little bit later, which they're happy about. They feel like they can contain the kindergarten.
So they've already, they would have already done it.
Yes, yes. So lots of excitement happening over there. And again, to reiterate, they are thrilled that the extended day, the parents, the parent feedback is that they're thrilled to have extended day there, so. I was gonna say, the only other, the high school advisory was the only one, the date wasn't mentioned. That's gonna be on Wednesday, the October eighteenth. Oh, Wednesday.
Another Wednesday, yeah. Who, does anyone not have a Wednesday?
Somebody's, Mr. Santry is a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
They, they, through the years, been a Tuesday.
Well, yeah, so the Turk, so Turkey Hill used to be, and now it's a Wednesday.
Well, because that's what it, yeah.
Okay, so we have a conflict with school councils.
We do, you and I. So what's your conflict?
My conflict is that the school council at the elementary school is scheduled on the third Wednesday of the month, and I have a prior scheduled meetings on the first and third Wednesday of the month in my district that I scheduled in August for the entire year. So the primary school schedule, though, actually, I could stay with them. That fits, because they're the last Wednesday of the month, so therefore fifteen to five fifteen. The elementary school is four to five.
The elementary advisory?
The elementary advisory is the third Wednesday from four to five.
They're doing once a month? I'm just curious, because usually the, the school councils used to be like six weeks or eight weeks, so I'm just curious.
No, now they're doing it monthly.
No, the primary school, we always did it.
Yep.
Once a month.
Oh, okay, that wasn't how the other schools.
Um.
And what time is it at Turkey Hill?
Four to five, four, four PM to five PM, so.
I can go late to Turkey Hill. Can I, I don't have a conflict with a third Wednesday. I just can't make it right at four o'clock.
So that's October eighteenth this month?
Is that the third?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm around, but I would have to go from the high school to the elementary, and I might run late if the.
I can take that one.
What can I take from you, then? Because if she stays, I mean, I can, I.
And I have.
Or do you just want me to stay with, I only had one other date that I had a conflict with the rest of the year for the primary school, so I don't mind.
And I have all the meeting dates for the, for the elementary school for the whole year, so if that's something, some, you wanna look at. It is the third Wednesday of every month.
That's fine.
I don't mind staying with the primary.
Okay, but then.
You have Finance Committee.
You've got FinCom.
You're, you're all set.
I don't mind staying with them.
I'm not gonna argue with you.
And you said there was just one other conflict that you had, primary.
November twenty-ninth.
And I can take that, absolutely.
Why don't we do that?
Okay, so we're all set.
Why don't we do that? Yes.
We're all set. Okay, we're all set. I'm taking Turkey Hill.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. She got that?
Oh, Meredith, PTO.
Again, Blaisdell, put the gauntlet down and.
Could you have an update on Cherry Hill fundraiser?
I do not have that number.
Figure, I'm just wondering, because I went that day.
I will ask about that and.
Just wondering, okay.
I, I know it was very busy there.
It was, it was good.
So I'm sure it was successful, but I, I do not have that figure.
Okay.
All right, so if anybody still needs to sign up, milesformiles.com was mentioned. If you're looking for the link for volunteering, that was in superintendent's update, the October third update, so the link is right there. And the next meeting will be on October sixteenth, seven PM, Middle School Project Room.
Oh, after, okay.
The feature will be the superintendent update.
Oh, and you were gonna be attending, okay. Capital Planning had a meeting yesterday, and it was just to streamline the forms that we're sending out to the department heads, similar to Finance Committee. John Henshaw has been working on a spreadsheet for the capital planning requests, five-year plan. Our next meeting, which hopefully will have all the capital requests back for, is November fourteenth at five o'clock here at Town Hall. And then after that, we will set up meetings with department heads to come and present their capital requests. Wellness Advisory?
Wellness Advisory met a week ago Wednesday, and a couple of big things, again, you know, mental well-being, you know, at the forefront, there is for district-wide employees, a flu clinic upcoming, and a grant was submitted and will be reviewed next Tuesday night at the Lions Club for, to get funding to have a certified person staff the weight room in the winter months after school, so that students, when it's not in use for sport, could actually utilize this for their own workouts. But clearly, you can't just have a volunteer supervising in that way, so it needs funding that's not currently in our budget. And the Lions Club had reached out to us in the passing. We do have grants, kind of like the PTO does in RFF, very similar, so that was filled out. I know that the Lions Club reached out to Mrs. Puket, who, at the high school, who is kind of the point person for this today, to ask, they, in advance, some questions they felt like might come up. So they got those questions answered today, and I know that. So Tuesday night, they will meet and discuss this as part of their meeting. So that would be an exciting possible opportunity. And next meeting is the twenty-fifth? Twenty-fifth, the day of all good things.
On that topic, my, my trainer has suggested to me that he may be available to work with coaches and students on proper lifting techniques.
Which would be awesome.
Because he thinks that that will prevent injuries, as long as people have the proper techniques.
Sure will.
Yeah, it will. So.
Especially at a time when there's not one of our current, and, and not that our own coaches don't have experience, but having someone, someone else in with them, but also, you know, even at a time when our weight room isn't used for students outside of sports could be beneficial as well.
So I'll give you his name.
I would think that Mr. Spatafino and Mrs. Puket would be great connections there, but we can definitely bring it up at our next wellness meeting.
Okay, so topics for future discussion. What are we doing?
We'll continue with policy.
Yeah.
We'll just maybe put a, do you want a standing item on the, on the agenda for?
For policy?
Any policy ideas someplace, do you think?
Because things do pop up, and it would be nice to have that opportunity. We can always pass it by if there's.
Right, right, that way we can talk about it just in case, yeah.
Jod our memories, definitely.
Okay. What was on the calendar, our, our regular calendar for next week, next month?
We'll be getting the, the results back on the sixteenth, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I know the state is going to be doing several webinars, because since they've, since they've shifted to a new test, it's a new test, so they're preparing everybody to understand it's a new test, and there'll be different benchmarks in how kids perform. But there, I believe the twelfth are, is the first webinar from the DESE that's going to share some information that we can then share with parents in the community in terms of the new, the new test and the new results. And also, I believe, the Acting Commissioner is going to have some information going home with the assessments, that they have developed some kind of informational sheet.
Okay.
I'll know more about that after the webinar.
Okay, okay. So are we ready to go into executive session, then?
I believe so.
Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session according to MGLC thirty A, section two, twenty-one A two, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with Lunenburg Custodial Union Local 503.
And not.
And not to return to regular session.